Good morning. Let me go ahead and call the meeting to order. And first, I'm going to ask Reverend John Offendulis to lead us in prayer. He's with the Greek Orthodox Church. And Father John, make sure you pray for my student, who'll be here momentarily, I hope, to help me with the pledge. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. New. Again, as he said, I'm Father John from the Greek Orthodox Church here in San Angelo. My wife and I, she's Romanian, I'm Yankee, please don't hold that against me. I come from Salinas, California, where I was assigned previously to this. We look very forward to our mission here in San Angelo. Our church is a little, small church on Montecito. And God willing, today, I think that we close on purchasing a home, so we want to make our roots here. We thank you all for inviting me, so that we can all join together in prayer today. And if you have any questions concerning the Orthodox Church, we're a Christian-based religion that dates all the way back to our Savior, from the very early years when both the Roman Catholic Church and the Eastern Orthodox Churches were united until the year 1,000. Let us pray to the Lord. Heavenly King, O Comforter, the Spirit of Truth, who art everywhere present and fills all things, O Treasury of every good and bestower of life, come and dwell in us and cleanse us from every stain and save, O Good One, our souls. Lord Jesus Christ, thank you that you have brought us all together for this city council meeting. All Holy Spirit, we ask that you guide us and steer these council members in decisions for the good of the people and that their governance allow us, all the diverse peoples and your children of San Angelo, to live a peaceful and serene life. God the Father, we ask you to bless us all. Amen.
What I'm going to do is buy a little bit of time and move into a recognition this morning and handle that, and then we'll see if we can't have a helper with the pledge in just a moment, okay? So, I bet you, Bertha Garcia? Yeah, that's what I thought. Bertha, you must have had a lot of hair.
Yes, sir.
Huh?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Come on around here. This lady is terrific. And what she has done is she has helped folks who need hair typically based on cancer treatment through having her hair cut and donating it to Locks of Love. And so, we'd like to recognize Bertha for that this morning. And this is a "You Make the Difference" certificate commending Bertha Garcia, who is an office assistant with the City of San Angelo Recreation Department, for doing more, doing it better, and exceeding our expectations. Your high standards inspire us all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thanks. I'll come back up here and we'll get pictures in front of the cell.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
Okay. I don't want to do any kind of improvisational presentation or comedy, so...
Song and dance?
Yeah, song and dance. So, I'll tell you what we'll do. We'll go ahead and get started on a little bit of work, because the student is en route, and so, I don't want to let them be on their way and then, you know, bypass their responsibility. So, I'll start the meeting, and then I'll just come back down here, and we'll do the pledge when it's time, okay? She had, she's ill. For those of you that see, there's another recognition, but she's ill today, so we're postponing it. At this time, the council takes public comment on all items. During the meeting, the regular agenda items will have appropriate discussion, and input should be given at that time. Public input on an item not on the agenda, or on the consent agenda may be identified and requested for consideration by the council at this time. The council may request an item to be placed on a future agenda, or for a consent agenda item to be moved to the regular agenda for public comment. So, council.
I have a comment.
Okay. Do you have anything on our agenda first?
Yes.
Okay. Moving anything?
Yes, I'd like to move two, three, and four.
Two, three, and four.
Just have a simple question.
Okay. Others? Mr. Silva?
I have a comment.
Okay, I'll get to you, sir. Okay, well, Ms. Farmer?
I wanted to take the opportunity to remind everyone and the council about our Port de Plaines Southern Work Group meeting that's coming up, February 14th and 15th. It will give the business people out there an opportunity to come and hear what Port de Plaines is about and to ask any questions that they have. And if you need more information as to the time and date, I'll be happy to give it to you before I leave this evening.
Okay.
Or this afternoon, or this morning.
Mr. Silvas?
You know, I wasn't going to say anything, but if we need to kill a little time, I wanted to share...
You want a song and dance, don't you?
Yes, I do. I think it was last week, or maybe last Sunday, I read in the paper, it was a, the church gathering group, I guess it's a local church here in town, went out on Sherwood Way and picked up some of these plastic bags, and kudos to them, you know? But I've also, I've always seen, almost every day, and I brought this up before, where the, our Loop 306 is a beautiful stretch of highway, and thank God that they have mowed it here recently, it looks nice. But again, I remember visiting with, I believe it was, is this Tracy Kane still with Texton? Tracy Kane? I even made a phone call to State Representative Drew Darby last week and mentioned to him about the entrances and exits of Loop 306 and how filthy they've become, you know, a lot of gravel buildup. So, I give thanks for the church for doing that. I challenge any other church out there, I challenge any other organization, whether it's a Rotary Club or a Lions Club. In speaking to Tracy about cleaning some of that area, he mentioned right away the safety issue, and I understand safety, you know? Cars traveling down that Loop 306, they are going at 60, 65 miles an hour, even faster. But if we're going to wait around to get past this safety issue, then it's never going to get cleaned up. So, again, I urge any other church out there, any other Lions Club, any other organization that is interested, I'm willing to spearhead something like that, you know, just to get it cleaned up, get it swept up, and, you know, I think a while back, we were aiming to be an all-American city, but, you know, when folks coming into town, especially down 87, and they see this, I'm all for trying to get this area, these areas cleaned up. So, just wanted to throw that out there, for anybody interested. Get in touch with maybe the city manager's office, or just get in touch.
Okay. Two other announcements. We have a capital improvement plan, public forums. There are two upcoming. One is at 6 o'clock Thursday, February 7th, here at the McNeese Convention Center, and the second one is at 6:00 PM on Tuesday, February 12th, at Lincoln Middle School in North San Angelo. And this is a draft of the 2013 through 2018 capital improvement plan, and it's available at sananglotexas.us, and can be, your input could be given to us at those two public forums. And another announcement here, there's a Water Customer Service Day. There's an opportunity for water customers who have questions and concerns about their individual account to be addressed by a customer service representative. We're setting those up on Saturday, February 9th, at the Water Billing Office, which is at 122 West First Street. Appointments are required, and it's, for scheduling an appointment, please call 325-657-4323. So, 325-657-4323, Saturday, February 9th, at the Water Billing Office on First Street for appointments concerning water bill questions. So, with those announcements, let's see if we can't get to the pledge. How are you? I'd stand here. Please come with me. There you go, for the face of flag. Yeah. Okay. Mason, I'll be right back with you, okay? Joining me this morning is Mason Garza. Mason is a sixth grader at the Texas Leadership Academy.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Thank you, sir.
Good job. Thank you.
Mason's probably thinking, "We hurried all the way over here for that?" Okay, I would like a motion on a consent agenda, remember items two, three, and four.
Motion to approve consent agenda excluding items two, three, and four.
Second. Okay, I have a motion from Mr. Hirschfield, a second from Ms. Farmer. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Is there any public comment at this time?
Good morning, Mayor, Council, gentlelady. My name is Jerry C., and I'm not speaking for WTOS or St. Paul Baptist Church is where I attend service. I'm speaking as a member of single-member District Four, and I've been talking to a lot of people in my district. And I was even at a meeting Saturday, and we discussed this at a meeting. We're not really interested in you putting anyone in the...
Mr. C., that is an agenda item, so...
Oh, it is?
Yes, sir. So, let me...
Okay, great.
So, let me go ahead and give you the agenda item number, and then ask you to give guidance. It's number 16.
Okay, thank you, sir.
So, it is on the agenda, and we'll take your advice when the time comes, okay?
Okay. Thank you. Then it looks like I'll be here all day anyway.
Yeah. We don't want you to get cheated. All right.
Get your money's worth.
Any other public input at this time? All right, let me ask that we start with item number two, then. Are these, here we go. Ms. Farmer, how about walking us through these three items, one at a time? Item number two is the consideration of awarding a utility trench repair contract.
The only reason that I ask that to be talked about publicly is the dollar amount. It's just a large amount, and I want people to understand, it's not anything that's already been assigned, this is what you're anticipating that it's going to be for this year, and because of the amount, I just want you to briefly talk about it.
Right, this contract is for all the maintenance activities that are performed by the City Water and Wastewater Department, for any maintenance activities, main repairs, taps, whatever the case may be, for repairs done in the streets and alleys in San Angelo. It's a 16-month contract.
And there's not any specific street or alleys selected?
No, ma'am.
That's what I wanted to clarify for the public out there. Okay. Motion to approve?
Second.
I have an additional question. I almost pulled it myself, but you beat me to it. Ricky, what happens to the work that, some of this stuff, the trench repair that our current employees were doing, does that go away? They lose the ability to do that, or what happens there?
We've been doing this as a contract operation for years and years. Our employees haven't done this. I can't remember, we had it at one time, and I don't even remember what year it was, it was so long ago. So, it's not something that we routinely do with our employees.
Okay. We don't do any kind of trench work at all?
No.
Well, repair, the...
Not the repair part of the trench.
This is the repair, really the, kind of the road repair that takes place.
Right.
So, I'm sure we're doing the trench work.
We tear it up, they fix it.
Okay.
You tear it up, you fill the hole back up?
Depending on the location.
Correct. And then they fix it.
Okay. Okay. Okay, I have a motion and a second from Ms. Farmer, Mr. Hirschfield, to approve this item. Call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, item number three?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this was the awarding of the VM 0712 for repair service to various vendors, as outlined in the bid. I just simply wanted to ask, or wanted clarification, is this a result of our switching vehicle brands?
No, ma'am, it's not. Historically, the city shop has not carried a contract for repair parts and labor for the repair that we do on city vehicles and equipment. What we attempted to do this time with this go-around is secure a percent markup or a percent discount on repair parts, in addition to, in pretty much a separate item, secure that same labor rate for repair services done whenever we subcontract a repair to another vendor. What we found when we received the bids was on the repair parts, it was so, it was too convoluted to get a clear picture on an award basis. The service side was not the case. We were able to specifically outline in name vendors' labor rates and parts markup based on those services.
Thank you. Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to have further question or comment. Okay, call for the vote on this one. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Item number four, consideration of authorizing the sale of the following properties.
Mr. Mayor, the question that I have on this is authorizing the sale of the properties for the appraised value. I just need clarification, the appraised value, are these amounts on the lot only, the land only?
That's correct. This is not any improvements that are done to it.
No improvements, this is the lot only.
That's correct.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay. Any questions on this one? Okay. Call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Move us to the regular agenda at this time, and take us to item number nine. This is a first public hearing and consideration of introducing an ordinance and annexing property within San Angelo's existing city limits and the related matters. Presentation by our, is there anyone that doesn't have interim by their name right now? Presentation by our interim director of Development Services, A.J. Favre.
We're proud of those interims.
Rick Wise didn't have an interim.
Okay.
I have one.
We had an annexation item that we discussed at the last meeting, so you'll hear a lot of the same materials today. I'll try to streamline it for you. This is a separate property that we're looking at. Again, this is 8.995 acres. This is at far southwest San Angelo. The map that we have shown on the slide here has a red cross-hatched area that denotes that area. And then here is a survey of that area, again, showing the layout of the lot. You can see on this particular survey, in the bottom right-hand corner, that there is a section of the Prestonwood addition that abuts this particular section of property. This annexation, if approved, will be used to continue that particular subdivision and re-subdivide for a variety of home types. To satisfy our requirements, we did go through the chronology, which I've pulled up on the screen here, starting with presenting a petition for annexation to you back in December. This was a petition by the property owners, essentially requesting you, as the governing body for the City of San Angelo, to accept and begin the process of annexation. As required by state law, we had two public hearings for public comment, both in January, at which we received no public comments, as you may recall. Today, we're introducing an ordinance to finalize this particular annexation, and if all goes well, we will bring you that for a second reading at your next meeting on the 19th. At our last meeting, we talked a little bit about the guidance for annexation that is given to us and our comprehensive plan for the city. And you might remember that a few of those particular details asked you to look at whether the area might develop in the future, whether or not the area is already developed, and to what extent infrastructure improvements are needed in the areas that you're asked to annex. So, that's a good summary, I think, of the plan's guidance. In short, in looking at this particular area, again, the area is vacant currently, there's no development in place. However, development is anticipated directly following the annexation, so it does also meet that criteria. And then lastly, infrastructure needs are going to be somewhat minimal in this area, but remember that the subdivision ordinance does require, as developers subdivide property, to extend water, sewer, and streets to that area. So, that will be accomplished through the subdivision process, and we do not identify any capital improvement needs that seem to be imminent or in the near future for this property. The Prestonwood addition itself was annexed to the city in 2008. Some of you may have been involved in that process, and it currently contains a mix of homes, single-family residences, and also what we call zero lot-line homes. We also sent notifications, as required by state law, to SAISD, the Volunteer Fire Department with jurisdiction in this area. The utility companies in Tom Green County, we received no responses to those notifications. And again, as with the last annexation, we're not required to, but we did complete notifications to a variety of city departments and divisions, and also received no responses. Lastly, the main effect of this annexation, just to provide a good understanding, will be mostly maintenance and extension of services to this area. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those for you.
Mr. Silvas?
And I'm sorry, misunderstood. Are the water lines, sewer lines, they're in place now, or are they not?
The mains are nearby, because when the Prestonwood addition was annexed and developed, they had to extend that service, and so, they will simply pick up from where they left off, extending into this subdivision at the time that that is subdivided formally.
They're nearby, so...
That's correct.
Tap into it, okay.
Just across Mills Pass Drive, actually.
Other questions?
Motion to approve?
Okay, I have a motion from Ms. Farmer, a second from Mr. Silvas. Do I have any public input on this item? Okay, call for this vote, then. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Ms. Favre, do I need to announce a public hearing on this one?
No.
Okay, not today?
Not today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I just noticed Rick and Michael here, and I wondered if I missed the memo on dress codes.
Kendall only read it halfway.
I started to get there, but I...
So, it's like the movie Twins. Presentation...
And it's early.
Item number, item number 10.
Way out of control up here.
Indeed. Item number 10, presentation on the North Concho River and Trails Improvement Project, and this is a presentation by our Parks and Recreation Director, Carl White.
Yes, sir. We've been asked to give a presentation update on the river project. Rick Wise is here as well, and David Knapp, the project manager, in case I can't answer any questions, they can answer them.
Do you know what I was thinking, Mr. White? How about if we put interim in front of yours? Okay.
Interim Parks and Recreation?
Well, it's kind of nice, because then it's like, you know, you're on probation.
I'm always on probation.
All right, here we go. Mr. White?
Good answer.
Just a quick overview of the scope of the project. The main scope of the project is between Central High School, where the library is, down river to about Johnson Dam, although we are doing some items improvements outside of that area, including a kayak launch, canoe launch area, just outside of the convention center, along the river, just across the street from the Clarion Hotel. That is grant-funded. We're also doing some lights down river in this section here, as well as city park. And we're going to do some trail refurbishment from Bell Street all the way up through this location, and hopefully back up the river to 14th Street. But the primary location of the project is between these two locations, and most of the detail work is in this core area between Oak Street and Abe Street. We began the project, and as you know, the project is not just this one contracted portion of the project, and I'll mention some other things with the entire project here in a second, but we started the contracted portion of the project in October of 2011. Our current completion date is August of this year. We had extended it because we added some additional bank stabilization several months ago. The current budget for the project is about 9.9 million. With current pay applications, we're about 78% complete. We just received another pay application for about a quarter million dollars, so we're a little bit past that point right now. Funding is mostly half-cent sales tax, although we do have about $2 million in grants, two from Texas Parks and Wildlife, one for trails, and one for different elements, a large grant from the Health Foundation, $570,000, a grant from the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality, and a grant from the National Endowment for the Arts. Most of the work is really bank stabilization in this core area here, but the project also includes improvements of the trails, addition of lights, some neat landscaped areas with outdoor exercise stations, sitting areas, shaded structures, water features, public art, and a games court area that we'll show you here in a second. There is some other work outside of the contract that I'll explain as we go through the pictures here in a second. And I would like to mention about the dredging. Sometimes we get questions about, when is the dredging going to happen? Well, the dredging has already happened. It happened in 2009. What we did, based on recommendations from the Upper Colorado River Authority, the worst part of the area that needed to be dredged, since this area, sections of this portion of the river had been dredged previously in the 90s and in the 80s, we began dredging of the river in 2009 with a little barge that was in the river, with a pipe that went up to 19th Street. At this location, where self-adraw feeds into the river, it wasn't a full removal of silt in this section, but it was a significant removal of silt in that section. But the most thorough sections that were dredged are here, from Borogad Bridge upriver to a point where we could get the barge in. It got narrow here at the point where we couldn't get the barge in, and then all the way up to about 14th Street. There are some sections where it was too narrow to get the barge in, but the river has been dredged, and that was done in 2009. All the silt was taken up to Suddling Pits at 19th Street, if you recall. Let me go through the pictures right quick. This is at the northern portion of the project, looking at the bank stabilization. This is the added stabilization with the large change order we did a few months ago below the library at Central High School. We had to level a portion of this property so we could get the equipment in to put the riprap along the bank. And you see a portion of it here where some of the water comes off, sheets off the property to prevent erosion. This is looking down river from Pecos Bridge. Here's Civic League Park with the Gabion Dam. You can see the riprap, underneath the riprap, the bank has been sloped, and there's been weed fabric placed underneath to prevent the encroachment of weeds. These are erosion mats, or logs, we call them, that prevent erosion. Those will be removed after the turf has been established. Another look between Pecos and Borogad. This is a good shot here, down river from Borogad Bridge. It shows the good slope of the river now, about 30 degrees, which, once the turf gets established, will pretty much not have any significant erosion of these locations in the future, with the sloping and the bank stabilization. This isn't the picture, side-by-side picture of the same exact location, but it just shows you what the bank looked like at about the location here, just below Borogad Bridge, where the bank was just straight down and sloughing off. And now, with bank stabilization, with the bank sloped and the stabilization placed, we shouldn't encounter any erosion, bank sloughing off for decades to come. This is the High Pedestrian Bridge. As you know, we had to... We've hired a structural engineer. We're working out the details of that plan right now, and we hope to get this bridge repaired during the course of this project now, and have it complete by this summer.
What happened? What went wrong, or what is...
Yeah, I'm about to explain.
Okay.
If you look, there's these support elements that are underneath the bridge. They're metal. They're hollow. If you can see the hole at the end. When these supports were placed in, water over the course of the time has gotten into these elements and rusted. So basically, we need to replace almost all of these underneath metal elements. Need to replace all the decking on the bridge, and replace the railings on the side of the bridge.
One thing we noticed when we got into that is that when it was constructed, when was that bridge put in?
Eighty-two, eighty-three.
Those elements, not the biggest ones, but the smaller ones, were open on the end. They didn't have the C-bar, or the tubing did not have caps on the end. So it looks like birds and stuff got in there, which then built nests, which then just caused the problem. So the new replacement, when we put those back in, we're going to close all those off to avoid that problem from happening in this new one. But it was, that was how it was designed originally, but we think the birds and all that is what escalated the problem.
So we've got the solution coming.
Now, that's a pre-engineered bridge.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Have we visited with the company that originally designed that bridge, just for, get some of their input, get some of their... Because surely, this is not the first time that they've had that problem. I mean, and this is all coarse tin steel here, so...
We have not, but it's, the bridge has been in place for thirty-ish years.
And I'm not trying to look at a warranty type thing. I mean, it is what it is, but...
They may have a simple curative.
Right, but they may, you know, surely, this is not the first time, and they may already have an engineering fix already done, that we don't have to hire another engineer to do this.
We can check with them. It appears that the larger beams that are in place, they're fine. They simply have a cap on the end of them, so that water cannot get in. And all of those are fine. It's just the ones without the end. But, you know, and we can check with them, but as with any structural issue, we'll have to have an engineer stamp on it. And so we would just, we can check with them to see if, for some reason, they're willing to do that for free, and so we can ask.
And I'm not in disagreement with what you're saying. You're going to have to have a Texas P.E. to do that. But they may already have a fix in place, is what I'm saying. And if they've got a fix in place, all we have to do is get their fix that's already been designed and such. We get the calc, we give it to our engineer, and they review it and stamp it, and not have to run through all the calc procedures.
Kendall, what we'll do is see if, we'll see if we can get in touch with them, and if they're willing to go there. If not, we will proceed with trying to get, as we are, a stamp on it, because what we wanted to do was make sure we were able to hopefully get this done within the project phase, so that once the river opens back up, that bridge is complete. So we'll try and touch base with them to see if that's an option. And if not, then we'll proceed with an engineer to get it moving along.
Sure, okay. And then, I guess, one last question, is your fixes you're going to go into, and I know that'll be on a separate agenda, a separate item, when you bring that back. Are y'all going to be looking at replacing the metal with the quartet steel, the exposed rusting steel?
Probably the same metal elements.
Okay. Because, I mean, that is one of the aesthetic values of that bridge. All the bridges along there is their rusting characteristics.
All right, the quartet steel.
Yes.
Ms. Farmer.
Carl, could you back up to the very first picture that you showed there in front of Central High Library, right there? I was looking at that the other day, and I'm just curious. That slope is pretty steep, and I understand why the berm stuff there for erosion, but is there an advantage to planting a native grass or something in there to help hold that erosion longer, and could that be done? I mean, not something that has to be maintained, a native ground cover grass?
Well, there is some cane in this location, and it will grow back. I don't know if you remember, but this whole entire area was full of cane, and that was doing a really good job of holding that bank in place. And it's still there. It's going to come back.
Thank you.
But yes, the banks in general, you know, when they're in that sort of environment, need to have something on them. So whether it's grass, the native grasses that grow, in this case, Carl's right, there's cane there, so it's very hard to kill that stuff. I mean, it's going to have to be continually, but it's going to come back, or grasses, in most cases on the river, we're re-establishing grasses on those slopes.
I particularly don't like the cane. It just blocks the view and vision of it, but I am concerned about runoff if something is not there.
And this property, of course, is maintained by the school district. We went ahead along the bottom of that, because we felt it was critical to stabilize the bank from the city standpoint. We did talk to the school district about whether or not they wanted to extend that even higher, and everyone felt this was sufficient. So that's where we stopped, and we actually did that portion. But we can visit with them also about that bank, as far as what their druthers are.
And you can't see it, but there's a small berm at the top of this property. As the water sheds from this property, it comes down this location where the riprap's been added. So we don't anticipate much erosion on this slope.
I'm going to hold you to that.
Excuse me?
I'm going to hold you to that.
Yes, ma'am.
We walked it pretty extensively, and you can tell exactly where the water comes down. And it's just the way that top portion is contoured, and the way it sheds off those buildings, it goes down in just a couple of spots. It does catch what comes right there, but it's not the big...
It's such an improvement, and it looks so neat and clean. I would hate for us not to take that extra step to put some sort of ground cover to keep it from a good hard rain, and it's going to wash all that mud down there on the beautiful rocks.
Mr. Silves.
Carl.
I never knew why we had closed that high pedestrian bridge. But is that repair going to fall under budget? I mean, is it included, or...
We're holding contingency money to be able to repair that bridge if needed.
And that's one reason you'll, you know, see a lot of times, people are going, well, we need to do this, we need to do this, 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 and this, and we've got this list. But really, until we get these core items taken care of, and we cover those with the contingency funds we may need, you know, we're really not willing to go into doing a whole lot of things until we see where we land. This particular item, we're also looking at the potential to using some risk funds to assist with as well. So we'll see where that all plays out in the end.
Are you going to have pictures of the putt-putt area, the old area over there, of what's happening, or...
We've got a few pictures, but we're not really looking at the putt-putt area, because it is outside of the scope of this project. But we've got some pictures here in a second, I'll show you.
The putt-putt area is where we took out some of the boxes, and of course, there's a sewer line going through there as well. But what we've done on those areas, we maintained some of the putt-putt with the intention of, under this contract, just cleaning it up. Our intention is to have a new restroom facility and concession stand area there, and then work on a public-private partnership to come back in and try and develop that area, and do that, as well as paddle boats and various other things. If we have contingency dollars left, which we hope to, then that may be one of the areas where we want to spend those to develop even some more. We have a games area there adjoining.
That's what I'm getting at. I'd like to see the games area.
Right, I'm getting into that.
And I thought that fell within that scope, I mean, Johnson Dam, it's right there.
Right. It's coming up.
Okay.
Moving down river, just to the east of the high pedestrian bridge, a new public area where folks can eat lunch or just hang out. There's seating and boulders. A closer look at the new stone column here. A light will be added soon, and limestone sculpture panels will be added as well. This is below that area, where folks can play music and listen to music, or have a little stage performance, or just sit to eat a picnic. This is across the river, below the Abe Street, Abe Street Bridge on the south side. This is one of the new mosaic panels that was added back in October. Stack stone across from the visitor's center and below Kids Kingdom that joins up with the existing bank stabilization. The public can now actually get down to the level of the river and swing back up if they'd like. Some repairs going up next to the Mesa Fountain, additional curbing and pave stones, pave stone work. At this location, there's, we've done some stack stone bank stabilization, as well as some riprap stabilization. This section here has a lot of conglomerate stone, so as part of this project, the bank is already stabilized, but we would like to follow up and at least visually tie that location together, bring some of the stack stone this direction, and perhaps some riprap this direction, so it at least visually ties together.
Yeah, this one changed a little bit. As Carl said, if you remember, that particular area was full of the cane as well that Ms. Farmer was referring to. So once they took all of that out, it gave the architect a little more ability to look at it. So that may be an area we do a little more work on.
Mosaic cars underneath Cunningham on the south side, beginning of the exercise stations below Cunningham on the north side. The exercise elements haven't been added yet, but the initial posts have been.
And those are items funded by the Health Foundation.
That's correct.
The equipment is part of, will be part of this contract?
Yes, sir. It just hasn't been added yet.
I understand, I understand.
And it'll have a nicer surface for folks to walk on as well. Just a quick look at some of the LED lights that are underneath the bridges. That'll be able to be programmed with different colored lights for different seasons. We've added two ramps in this project for the public to be able to access the river, as well as maintenance crews. This one is below the Boy Scout Building by the visitor's center, and the other one is down by the river stage. This is just a look down Irving that shows that the road has been narrowed a little bit, and the walkways widened for safety. The railings going up and the stone columns on each of the, both sides of the river. This is a look at the crossing at Irving, looking back to the west. I would like to mention that this column here will need to be replaced, primarily because it is in the site triangle. What we're looking at doing is keeping the stone base, and then coming up with a metal structure that you can actually see through, so there wouldn't be a site line problem, and then adding the light at the top. So, and of course, the hash, the crossing, the crossings, the hash marks will be moved to this location.
May I ask a question or make a comment? This crossing right here is, the citizens are looking at it and seeing a problem. I thought we were going to have a kind of a speed bump, a cross that's raised?
It will be further up, about this location here, on both sides.
Okay, because they're seeing the cars, they're still going just as fast as they were, but it's narrower.
It's not finished, and it'll be a lot more visible here once the crossing's made, and of course, the little hump.
I'll let them know they stay tuned. They were doing some stuff, okay.
It's a work in progress. Just a closer look at the crossing here at Irving, as well as the entrance to the new trail that we're going to add along the Health Foundation's property on the south side of the river. Some stack stone at the Irving Street location that helped dress this location up. It was just concrete bulkhead wall and a pumping station. Look at the games court areas, it's starting to take shape with the stacked boulders for seating and the light columns. Here's a good shot of one of the new light standards. One thing we didn't anticipate was some of the rocks have some interesting fossils in them, particularly the darker stones. We do have restrooms now for this location. That was one of the things that the public expressed a desire to have, especially since this is a location for special events and for the public fishing programs. One of the refurbished fountains below the putt-putt area. This is the old concession at the putt-putt. It will need to be removed, because the sewer line is coming into the backside of this property, but it will be replaced with another concession building that'll probably be brought forward.
Not part of this contract?
Not part of this contract, separate. Some more art. This is below Chadburn on the north side of the bridge. A good look at below NEFS, where the stack stone has been placed for public seating, and the lights, LED lights have been added, which illuminate the area fairly well. An earlier shot of the fountains being tested. This is the main fountain below NEFS. These are unfinished, but these are the new shade structures that are below the NEFS area by the main fountain. More artwork just to the west of Oak Street Bridge. This is an early shot, but it's the new pumping station. Before, we had several pumping stations that ran all the fountains. Now we have one central pumping station. I believe the pump is actually in here. This is a supplementary location for a pump. This is actually a filter. Water comes through here, gets through the pump, and is distributed to the fountains. This actually pulls the gross matter out of, like, cups and sticks out of the water to filter it.
That area also, before Carl goes on, it'll look a little better than that. One, portions of it will be rocked, and then it'll have a black...
That's correct. There'll be stone on the outside. I think that's already begun, and there'll be a roof on the top, and there'll be fencing around, so the public can't access that.
Just wanted to try and conceal it a little better.
Look at the refurbished fountain next to Oak Street. If you recall, it used to be just a lot of jagged stones, and it really wasn't a place we could walk around and really enjoy. But now you can walk around it, and you actually sit next to it.
Yeah, and once the water runs on it, it becomes very dynamic, where you can get right down to the water, kids can play, and it's just nice.
Got a look at the artwork here at Oak Street, and a new interpretive area we've added that has some signs that talk about the early crossing, the connection between the fort and downtown, and about some of the plants and animals. This is a look of that location at night. These shots were taken, I think, yesterday. This is the third, but I think it was yesterday. We tested the fountains again. This is the catch basin that overflowed next to Celebration Bridge. It hasn't been operational for a number of years. It is now operational again with the new fountains. This is the main fountain in operation. Main fountain looking from the side. This is the fountain next to Oak Street Bridge. This is below the putt-putt area. I believe that's it. So, most of the work is concentrating now on the games court area. It's starting to take shape with the rocks, the boulders. Boulders are added. That location will have horseshoe playing areas, washer playing areas, bocce ball, and it'll just be a nice place to play. I believe that's all I've got. Are there any questions?
Okay, questions?
I just said, the completion date is August?
Yes, sir, August.
And do you have anything planned to...
Thank you for mentioning that. Let me go back to this first slide. We are envisioning having an event, at this point, we're calling River Fest. It'll be held in October. And we're envisioning it happening all along the river, but for two primary reasons. One, we'd like to celebrate the completion of this project, and also, we'd like to celebrate the hundredth anniversary of the acquisition of Santa Fe Park, which the city acquired in nineteen thirteen. So we are, we've got a committee set up. We're talking about the event. We're looking at having activities all throughout this area, a whole-day event. We have music and maybe balloons.
What was our tentative date?
The, I think we're looking at the nineteenth of October now.
We were kind of juggling between not hitting on top of Roping Fiesta, and not hitting on top of ASU Homecoming, and that kind of seems to be the date we're looking at.
So, we'll share more with you on that later. Thank you for bringing that up.
Okay, other questions or comments on this?
Beautiful work in progress.
Looks good.
Does.
Very good.
Thank you for the presentation. We have next on the agenda, item number eleven, is an update on participation and status of the Employee Wellness Program. It's a presentation by our Human Resources Director, Lisa Marley.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor, Council, and City Manager. As you recall, last year, we came before you with the findings of our baseline numbers for our health risk assessments and our wellness screenings. This year, we come before you with the results of having one year of data. We... As you recall, last year, we came before you with the findings of our baseline numbers for our health risk assessments and our wellness screenings. This year, we come before you with the results of having one year of data. We went through the second round of screenings this past fall, and so today, we have Cheryl Fluger, who is the Business Development and Marketing Manager for San Angelo Medical Community Center, she'll be presenting those findings to you today and answering any questions that you may have. She'll also be introducing the people that she brought with her today from San Angelo Community.
Coming with a broken ankle. Good morning, Mayor, and Council members, and City Manager. I'm Cheryl Fluger, and I bring with me Janet Charlesworth, she is the interim, we're gonna use that word again, the interim Wellness Coordinator for this wellness program. And all of you all might remember that as part of the exclusive contract with the city, we implemented the wellness program, and we have good data to show during this, this one-year project. Okay, well, I'm gonna go back to this great river shot, the will, the program that you just showed with the river is just wonderful, it fits great into the, to the wellness project, what a wonderful job. What we're gonna see in 2012 compared to 2011 is a nice improvement from the city employees, they are to be congratulated. Weight and nutrition continue to be the most crucial things that we're looking at, and they affect many of the diseases that we're looking at also, but there's some nice improvement, and the employees have done a nice job, so we wanna say congratulations to them. Overall wellness ratings went from 67 last year to 69 this year, and it's hard to move those wellness scores, that's on a, a system of a 100, and so that's ni, it's nice to move that up. You can see that the doing well stayed about the same, but the excellent moved to, moved up two percentage points, and the new, new needs improvement moved down, so, two points, so that's nice to move that through. As you also might remember from last year, about 20% of your employees usually have most of your healthcare cost, it's the 80/20 rule, so you look at most, in any type of a, a business organization, you have 20% of the people that normally have most of the healthcare needs. And comprised of that are people that have five or more healthcare risk, and this year, the city employees reduced that group of people, those that have five or more risk, by, by 9%. Generally, when you have five or more risk, your health claims cost and your health is three to four times more at risk. Here are your chronic diseases. If you look at the entire bar on diabetes, the 2012, which is the top bar, it is shorter than the 2011, so as a whole, that whole entire disease is decreasing. But also, the darker part of the bar, the red bar, went down from 45% to 40.8%, so that's a significant improvement with heart, with diabetes. With heart disease, same thing, the whole entire bar was shorter, is shorter in 2012, you went from 35% to 31%. Cancer stayed about the same, and I'll address that in just a minute, the cancer risk, and then the metabolic syndrome is something that we should keep our eye on. The metabolic syndrome is a cluster of diseases, when you have three or more diseases that might, that come together and present themselves together, and that's something that is affecting most of what we're looking at today. It's things like high blood pressure, high blood sugar, high blood sugar, cholesterol levels, or waist circumference that is too high, and so that's something that you can see overlaying in a lot of these diseases. When we look at diabetes, that is, 1/3 of the people in the US do not know that they are diabetic, so doing these preventive screenings and, and looking at that is important, and we also find that type 2 diabetes is largely, largely preventable, so their major risk are the obesity, which 326 people of the city employees have that condition, and then the nutrition plays an important factor, of which we're looking at 517 people, and low HDL with nearly 300 people. Heart disease also, 80% of those are linked to modifiable risk, it's one of the easier diseases to take a hold of, but obesity, low HDL, and then again, you see, you're seeing the metabolic syndrome that's affecting that. Cancer is the second leading cause of death in the US, but it's the leading cause for people of working age, and if those proper checkups are taken care of, we can find a lot of those cancers. Those major risks are being the smoking, obesity, and physical activity. And this is one of the, one of the screens that I wanted to show you all. If you look at the blue side, those are compliant with the people that are taking care of the preventive screenings, and as you all know, in 2012, you made that 100% deductible, or 100% cost of taking those preventive screenings. And the first two, the mammograms and pap smears are, are decent numbers, you've got 21% and 9% that are not taking, taking advantage of those, but then you get into the prostate and the colon screenings, and there's some work to do there, may, maybe encouraging employees to go ahead and get that, those two things checked. Then, if you look at what causes those diseases, these are the six top priorities that are underlying with the diseases we just talked about. Weight management, we've got 323 people overweight and 326 obese. Good nutrition, there's still some work to do on that, though we did have 199 people that are doing better with their nutrition. The high blood pressure is something to take, is something to look at, we've got some pre-hypertensive people, and then 160 with high blood pressure. And then you go on with physical activity and sleep and osteoporosis, needing, needing some encouragement with that. And here's a graph that shows that, you can see the nutrition, the top bar again is shorter than the bottom bar, so that increased, we've made some significant improvement with that. With weight, also made some improvement with the weight of the employees. If you look at the weight on the 42%, the national average is 32% with the high-risk people. Blood pressure stayed about the same, just increased just slightly, and fitness stayed about the same, and then we've gotta look at sleep and osteoporosis, sleep under, is underlying with a lot of these diseases as well. Here are the employee weights, you can look at the 2011 compared to 2012, there's 45% obese in 2011 compared to 42%, and that 3% is, that's a nice improvement. The same thing with the overweight, they moved into that category, which moves them out of, out of the obese category, and healthy weight improved. The national norm for the very obese is 12%, and we're at 17.9%. Nutritional statistics, we had some nice gain in this, if you look at 77% of the people in the first year compared to, oh no, in the second year compared to 675 people on the first year, there were some people that made some nutritional gains in that, that were eating unrefined or plant-based or low-calorie foods, which makes a big difference in how, how everything turns out. You also look at 325 people are 42% compared to 51% last year that were at, at risk with 10 nutritional factors, so that making, making improvement in this particular area is really huge, and for the employees to be commended. When you look at employee perception of health, it all starts with how people want to feel about themselves, and the perception of health improved to 49% over 47% the last year, and that's, that's wonderful, so looking at people that are paying attention to their health. Then you look at the economic impact, this is, it's interesting that when you have one risk, you're looking at $861 of excess cost of healthcare. If you look at that same person with seven or more risk, that same person should have an estimated $7,000 of extra healthcare costs, so you're looking at how, not only how that affects that particular person, but how it affects the bottom line for the, the healthcare risk. We made improvement with that, moving 100, well, moving 11 people out of that five or more risk area, so it went from 123 people on five or more risk to 112 people. That is, that also is a significant fact. The source for all of this comes from a 205,000 study of people that were at the University of Michigan, and they looked at your, a risk that, how they're correlated to healthcare cost, so it's a significant finding, a significant study, that basically puts your risk factors in line with your actual healthcare cost. We're just, I'll look at overweight, if you look at the 2, 502 employees that are overweight, that can be an excess cost of nearly 3/4 of a million dollars. Last year, we projected that we would probably save $199,000 in healthcare cost, the, the true numbers of, of the actual cost are coming in and will be available soon, but according to the risk factors, and if you correlate those, we were at $131,000, so we expect to see at least $131,000 of a health savings through people paying attention to their health in the wellness program. The accomplish, accomplishments that we had, again, we went from 67 to 69 in the overall wellness score, at least 30 people, 29 people lost more than 20 pounds. The risk factors in that five or more risk factor group went down by 9%. The risk factors for diabetes, heart disease, and osteoporosis were reduced overall with, and individually with these employees. We improved the nutrition of 249 people, at least 80 people started wearing their seat belts and reported they were wearing their seat, seat belts more often. 199 people became more active, and 16 people stopped smoking, and 14 more signed up this year to stop smoking, so there were some significant improvements made that we're happy that the employees have embraced this. The things that we implemented were Biggest Loser Contest, the diabetes education classes, smoking cessation, a Wednesday walking group where employees could go out and walk with a leader every Wednesday, a label reading class with dieticians, because it's, can be tricky if you don't understand that, my plate challenge, which takes care, takes the place of the food pyramid, it's kind of a new structure on what, what you're supposed to be eating, a fruit and vegetable challenge, which is underlying with most of these diseases we're looking at, a pedometer challenge, and flu shots. And now, I wanna introduce Janet Charlesworth, she has some suggested programs for 2013, we look at the metabolic syndrome and the fitness and the nutritional levels to talk about what we're going to do for next year.
Good morning, thank you for your time, and we are excited to do some more amazing things with the City of San Angelo employees. We'd like to continue our efforts with the wellness initiative and create a point system where people will earn points for doing all the right things, the healthy things, points for doing their screenings that we would like to promote further. We, we will continue with Biggest Loser contests for weight loss, and we would like to always have some sort of incentive related to fitness, activity, and nutrition or weight loss going on at all times with the city employees, so that it never loses momentum and it's always there at the forefront to keep, to keep our focus and eye on, on the biggest factors that, that Cheryl pointed out, which is excessive weight and lack of activity, and all those things combined certainly will help reduce the diabetes and the metabolic syndrome that plagues the City of San Angelo employees. We certainly want to continue with diabetes education and implement a Diabetes at Work program, which is a diabetes prevention program done by the CDC, and then, as Cheryl mentioned, we do have smoking cessation classes that we'll start back up in April, and we do have 14 signed up for that. We will begin our Wednesday walking group, and we, we will continue promoting exercise over the lunch hours or after work, or whenever people can work it in, and then we wanna do heavy focus on nutrition, so we will get involved again with bringing a dietitian in, helping people understand how to read labels, and implementing the DASH diet, especially for those who need to work on blood pressure reduction. And then, exercise is a big thing, the, the hot topic these days is the Couch to 5K program, we'd like to implement that with city employees and get people involved, and even their children involved in doing the Couch to 5K. And then Move for Life is a program that was done by the State of New York City, and they had tremendous success, and they have shared this program for anyone that wants to implement it, but it's, it's another little incentive, eight-week program that focuses on rewarding and calculating your activity levels each day and promoting more activity with, with the city employees. And then, we will continue with the pedometer challenges, those are very successful, and then we'd like to work on a obesity prevention program, which is another program that the CDC has come out with called Lean, and it's, it's leading employees to activity and, activity and nutrition, and it's, it's a very sound program, but it, it's definitely meant for reducing obesity, it's an obese prevention program, and we would work with them for 12 weeks at a time, working with those folks that have the five-plus risk factors and getting them involved in this prevention program. So we have a lot of exciting things that we'd like to do, and we're excited to work with you and make this even a better improvement for next year.
Obviously, we, we have had great success individually and with a group, and so we are, we're excited that some people have seen some tremendous benefits from the health program and have been excited about their own health, and overall, we're hoping that it reduces the cost of that while in, while also helping the health of the city employees, and you all serving as a role model for the entire town, because it's, it's something to have a leader with all of this. With these, with all of these solutions that we're looking at, doing the clinical pathways and to, if they have a specific disease, disease like metabolic syndrome, or have a cancer risk, or diabetes, you know, having that protocol where they're followed closely will be important. And then, again, recommending that they do the early checkups with all the cancer preventions. So, that's it. As you know, Kristi, as some of you may know, Kristi Nesbit has been our Wellness Coordinator, she had an awesome invitation to be a trainer throughout the southwest United States, and so someone else recognized how wonderful she was, we've had benefit of her for about 18 years at San Angelo Community, and we're tremendously excited that she was able to put her footprint with this, to this type of program, and we will continue on with tremendous leadership with this. So, any questions?
Okay, Mr. Alexander?
Yes, how can we help improve your program, improve your effectiveness? What can we do as a council to help you?
Well, I think, you know, as, just getting it started was, you know, a huge step, and having people come through and do the, the screenings, and that's been a huge process that we're seeing more of a warming effect with now, that people are happy to, to look at their, a little bit of improvement with their health. Some incentives to, to make them, to have the employees have a, a better reach for this with some of the programs that we just mentioned, you know, always when you incentivize people through either that point system, or you have some type of a goal at the end that you're recognized, would be wonderful, that would be a help.
I'm looking at weight, we have 502 employees that have a weight problem of some sort, and it costs us $1,486 per employee per year because of that, so if we incentivize them to lose, maybe we pay them a bonus of $10 a pound, or we, we get them into a, a fitness center, and we pay for it as long as you're losing weight, or we subsidize, I, I want them to buy in, I want them always to pay something, but if we can help them, and they are on a program that's improving their health, and it's saving us money, then that's a net gain for the City of San Angelo taxpayers, and so if you bring forward ideas to this council, I, I will promote them, and I think the, the other council members will too, I think, be looking for how we can help you with good plans and bring them to us. I, I know it's kind of, maybe, you might be worried about coming up here and asking for something like that, but, but do it, if it saves us money and helps improve health, please do it.
There are programs across the United States that do this, and so we would love to present some things to you, there are wonderful programs that have a, a positive incentive to having good health, so we would love to bring some ideas to you.
Thank you. Mr. Silva?
Cheryl, I had a, two questions, what was the, one, what was the percentage of the employee participation, and then, how do you measure sleep? I'm curious.
That's a lifestyle questionnaire on, on sleep. Um, that's a lifestyle questionnaire on, on sleep. People fill out an extensive questionnaire, uh, where they have, they tell how many hours of sleep on average that they get and then you compare that to a national standard. And this is self-reported, um, on what people say that they're doing. So that comes straight out of that lifestyle questionnaire. Six hundred and sixty-nine people took this particular, um, survey and that comes in with the, you know, you have your lipid test and then you also have your lifestyle questionnaire and that's put together to get the, the wellness score. And so it was six hundred and sixty-nine people this year that, um, participated in this.
So then almost three hundred employees didn't want to participate or didn't, didn't step up to, is that right? We have nine hundred and sixty plus or something?
Uh, yes, sir, but the only people that it's mandatory for are those that are covered with our insurance. So it's sitting right around eight hundred, um, that it would be mandatory for and that we are still searching for those employees and getting them through the process. So, um, as that, um, people that have changed their minds throughout the year as well. Last year, we had a number of people, I think ultimately it was like nine folks at the very end that chose not to participate. So, um, the number will shrink as the year goes by.
Okay. Mr. Valenzuela?
I also wanted to point out that we do have a discounted rate also through the San Angelo Community Health Club.
Right.
Uh, and I wanted to thank Janet. She was so helpful also in, in, and her staff when I went by there with my son. Um, there's a discounted rate for families. Uh, I'm actually paying three times less than I was paying in my previous city. And it's wonderful to work out with your family. Uh, my son, if I don't feel like getting up in the morning, he gets me up. You know, so we're there at five-thirty in the morning, you know, so we're going to be there to work out. So that's another way, of course, to encourage each other to work out, to go with the partner. And if you have a family member that can go with you, it's already part of the deal. Uh, why not do that? But I do want to thank you, Janet, for the professionalism that you've treated, uh, me and I think the staff also. And, uh, I think that's a wonderful deal that we have with you also.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much for the presentation. Let me take us to a break. Um, it's ten fifteen. I'll try to kick us off again at ten-thirty and we'll start with item number twelve.
Hey, item, let me bring the meeting back to order, please. It's, uh, item twelve, consideration of approving the City of San Angelo to permit the closure of city offices for employee participation in the neighborhood revitalization cleanup project in Blackshear neighborhood on Friday, April twenty-sixth, two thousand and thirteen, excluding offices of essential personnel who directly provide public health and safety services. And so our presentation today is by our Neighborhood and Family Services Director, Bob Solis.
Mayor, Council, I'm here once again to request permission to let the city employees participate in the annual neighborhood paint and cleanup blitz. It would require the city to close non-critical services for that day. It is our fifth event. Um, this year, we are targeting the Blackshear neighborhood on April the twenty-sixth with up to fifty homes. Uh, the plan is for the city to clean up alleyways and streets and paint twenty of the fifty that we've earmarked. Um, that, that will be on a Friday, uh, the twenty-sixth. Uh, we will also have some employees undertake projects on facilities maintained by the city. The other thirty will be painted by volunteers on Saturday, April the twenty-seventh. Volunteers include the ASU football team, uh, Goodfellow Air Force Base personnel, and members of local churches belonging to, uh, W T O S. Uh, we will once again partner with Habitat for Humanity, uh, with their Brush with Kindness program. They provide the paint and equipment, those kind of things. Uh, the previous events did yield quite a bit, uh, over seven hundred tons of junk and debris, over six hundred tires, and we've painted, uh, over a hundred and twenty-seven homes. Uh, this event does support the city's neighborhood revitalization plan and we're asking the council to approve it.
Okay. Do you have questions on the presentation?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Last year, we noted that we had a one-to-one ratio of city employees versus non-city employees or non-city personnel, volunteers, working on this. And, uh, I think we set a goal to try to increase that to two to one. Uh, the idea being we're, we're just planting the seed. We, we need more volunteers and we want that. Uh, but we want more, you know, we want more people chipping in on this deal. Uh, do we, what are our ratios this year? Can we get them higher? Can we get to that?
It is higher. Um, in fact, if you notice, they're going to do thirty of the fifty. We're only, we're only going to do twenty houses this year. So that's a little bit better than last year. Um, of course, with volunteers, uh, you don't know what you get. With city employees, you know exactly what you get.
Right.
So that's easier to, to plan. Um, I can't tell you how many volunteers we'll actually end up getting, but we're hoping to get, uh, almost perhaps not twice as much, but certainly a higher percentage.
So maybe, maybe one point five is what I'm looking, I mean?
Oh, absolutely. I think so. I think we're almost there actually, one point five, to be honest. The, the people have contacted me. Uh, they're excited. Uh, in fact, I got another, uh, the mayor just gave me another name that's, uh, that may be interested in participating, so.
Well, I'd like to report that number. When we have a report on what we did and the pictures and everything, that number is important. That we watch it and try to always increase it and set goals. Uh, employees can contact people they know that are in Rotary groups, uh, that work for corporations like Verizon and try to get them involved. And I think that's how to do it.
Absolutely.
Okay. Other questions or comments on this?
I think, Bob, like I mentioned earlier about, you know, some of the churches come together on even the project that I mentioned. I mean, certainly in the future, if you could look into partnering with some groups out there, I'd be very much interested. And having said that, I'm going to make a motion to approve this item.
Okay. I have a motion and a second to approve. The item is presented. Any further questions or comments?
I have one. What are your plans? I know you, I think you feed them breakfast or?
We do. We feed breakfast, we do lunch.
Where are you going to do this?
It's going to be, it's going to be focused, uh, at the Blackshear, uh, the gym over in the Blackshear School.
Okay.
I, I guess there's one more question because I get this, what's the cost to the city?
Well, um, everybody gets paid the same, doesn't really change. Your job location changes, but the pay doesn't change.
So our budget doesn't change? Our budgeted costs don't change?
Well, anything extra is, is donated or provided through grants or through some of our programs. So that, that part of the funding is taken care of. Uh, we don't, we don't change the budget a one single bit.
I just get emails from people that are really watching us saying, are you counting your dollars? Do you know how much this costs, Mr. Alexander?
Well, and so what the deal is, certain, certain way of looking at it is that you're, you know, you're not getting your normal productivity done. Uh, you're making a priority decision that it's worth investing the dollars. You're paying them in salary and hourly wages for this one day to go and clean up, uh, part of the community and revi- revitalize part of the community. And so, and so, well, the, I think those people that are questioning you on it probably, if, you know, to Mr. Solis' point, the paints provided, the brushes are provided, some of the materials are provided, those kinds of things. But what we're providing is, is number one, a, a vote of support for the process and we're, we're helping to provide the labor. And, and to the point that you made, Mr. Alexander, and that Mr. Solis is, uh, helping you, uh, with is, you know, you started a process that now is gaining a healthy, um, contingent of volunteers to go with the city employees. So it's truly able to make a bigger and bigger impact. So, but anyway, I would just say that it's an investment in the community and that we're, you know, it's not making the budget bigger, but it is realigning some of the expenditure to, uh, admittedly. So someone could challenge us without question, but I think we're, I think it's a good thing to do.
Thank you.
Mrs. Farmer?
I just wanted to add that it, to me, it's, it's part of community service. I mean, it originally started out and I'm assuming that it's still the same way is we provide a service for people who cannot afford to haul off their trash, people who are physically not able to upkeep and repaint or reestablish their homes. Uh, it, it's a community service for those that, uh, aren't able to do it on their own and it definitely revitalizes our city and it speaks for our community.
Okay. I have a motion and a second to accept it as presented and so if we don't have any further, okay, Mr. Hirschfeld?
One very quick question. Now, I, I guess to kind of reframe the, the question he's got as far as the cost, I mean, and, and this is probably for other departments or whatever, that we're not having to generate overtime.
Correct.
Different times.
Correct.
To redo that work. I mean, to make up for the work that they're, they're doing. They're just making up for the work during their normal cour- course of work.
That is correct.
Okay. That, then yes, it's no, should be no additional impact.
And I would want to tell the council that earlier in that month, Helping Hands will be doing their blitz for elderly while we do it for low mod income, some elderly, some not. We focus on neighborhoods, they're focusing on individual people. Uh, that's, lots of different perspective for us. And that's important to, to understand that, so.
Okay. I'm going to ask for public input before I call for the vote.
And Craig, what you added, tell us how, how many people participate in W T O S? How many?
Okay. I think I can quantify a lot of the things that, uh, Councilman Alexander talked about. Uh, first of all, addressing the issue of the movement toward volunteers. Uh, W T O S came to Mr. Solis after the second one where, uh, I think they did like, uh, twelve houses one time and then sixteen the next, something like that. And we said, it's been our experience that, uh, when you get thirty-five people standing around with paintbrushes, painting siding, uh, everybody gets some warm feelings, but that's not really very cost-effective. And so the first time when we got volunteers come in was in the Rio Vista one where, uh, they moved up to forty-nine houses, I believe. And the way we did that, we said, well, what would happen if W T O S came in with teams of people with sprays to do spray guns to, uh, do all the siding? And also, we would feed all the people that, uh, came in. And so we came up with teams that did twenty-six of those houses with siding that allowed them to increase more. Problem was, this is an evolutionary thing, uh, that, uh, the people who can show up for, as volunteers, uh, if they show up in the same day that's a workday, uh, you get less volunteers. So we set it up the next time for, um, two, uh, days that the city did their painting on a Friday and then the volunteers came in on, uh, on, uh, the following Saturday. And so, uh, we did that and we came up with, I think, forty-nine, fifty houses. But W T O S provided teams that did twenty of the houses. The, uh, football team did five houses and the base did eight or nine houses. So we came up with, uh, a large, larger proportion, uh, of the, um, volunteer base. Uh, this year, W T O S indicated that we would do up to thirty houses, uh, but that will, uh, either the other folks that are voluntary can take the load off of the city or if we fall short, four or five. But, uh, that, you asked Johnny about the number of teams. Uh, I don't know the people. We have about ten people per team because we have, uh, W T O S, a lot of the spray guns and we have, uh, people who are familiar. So that's probably, you know, a hundred, some folks, uh, from W T O S. Plus, we feed the, uh, people that show up for the volunteer day. Uh, quantifying something else about, uh, what kind of impact it has on the budget for folks that may not be able to put things together, uh, income and, and, and outgo. Uh, yes, there's a cost as you re-prioritize what workers are going to be doing. On the other hand, what we have found, because we're focusing on neighborhood revitalization instead of just doing some nice things for some nice people, following the one in Rio Vista where forty-nine houses were done, if you went there one year later, and W T O S surveys these neighborhoods every single year at least two or three times to get the numbers, uh, so we can do some strategic planning. One year after, uh, the fifty houses were done, forty-nine houses on the west side of Rio Vista over there, there were a hundred and forty houses that had been redone because when you concentrate those fifty houses, uh, roughly fifty houses, uh, in a particular area, then people began to, uh, do their own houses because that's an investment in property evaluation, as well as entrepreneurs that are buying some of the other trashed houses and rehabbing them. And so you get about a three to one or two to one increase because this is neighborhood revitalization, not just housing. And if you look at that, the siding and insulation and the necessary roofs on these houses more than double, uh, when you have really low, uh, income houses, doubles the property value, which says that you're probably in a four or five-year period going to increase the, uh, property tax valuation way more than what you're losing on that one day of, um...
That's excellent.
...service. And I think that you really have to understand that, understand that, uh, if you were to put a business model on this, uh, you're making a whole lot more money than you're expending. And I think, uh, we in W T O S have quantified this and we keep doing it. And the neat thing about Blackshear is that if we do fifty houses in Blackshear and there's about eleven hundred households there, uh, when we started, seventy percent of all those households were substandard. At this point, if we get to fifty houses, we're going to be down to less than one hundred houses, uh, or ten or twenty percent in that ratio. And that's an investment in the community, not only in its people, but on a dollar basis. Uh, it's not just do-good, which it should be and is, but it's also economic good business. So thank you.
Well, that's excellent and I appreciate you, Craig, and, and W T O S, because you're going out and you're getting data so we understand what's going on, we understand that we're making progress and this is truly something very remarkable. Uh, I think it's a role model for the rest of West Texas and the rest of anywhere. This is a premium group that does a wonderful job and I appreciate you doing that.
Um, so now what I'm after is other public comment? Okay. Call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Uh, item number thirteen is the discussion of and possible action on the recommended revisions to the hotel occupancy tax allocations. I have a presentation today by our Assistant City Manager and Chief Financial Officer, Michael Dane.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Recall that a couple of years ago, uh, when we still had City Manager Dominguez with us, uh, council started talking about, uh, accountability mechanisms being built into contracts, uh, with regard to, uh, the spending or utilization of occupancy tax monies. Uh, we've been working on that and we have what we think is a solid draft for the C V B, but we really, it's more than just a contract that we need to be talking about. So we want to give an overview today. We want to get direction from you so that we are proceeding. There are multiple fronts that need to be attacked on this and we want to make sure we're moving in the direction that council by consensus wants us to move. So we'll, to start on that, why do we want, why are we talking about occupancy tax? Uh, flexibility and accountability, uh, for city council, flexibility so that you can allocate resources where you see the needs are or where you see the priorities are. Uh, for example, in the last few years or last couple of years, we've introduced the, the concept, you have introduced the concept of spinning events up by supporting them for a finite period of time and then spinning them off to see whether they can, uh, live on their own. Uh, and not necessarily just supporting events indefinitely with, without regard for their own ability to sustain. Uh, in addition to that, the talk about accountability mechanisms, what is the public getting for their investment of this money? We want to work that into our process also and our contracts. But the other thing that's really got our attention is the unprecedented economic growth or the growth in this revenue stream. We see that happening, uh, under the current state of how occupancy tax is allocated. There's an ordinance that says this percentage to this group, this percentage to this group, this percentage here. And we think with that growth, it's, it's calling on us for greater management of that resource, not just to let it go, but to actively manage it. And so we think that's a, a burden that comes with that growth. So let's talk about flexibility. The current ordinance allocates all the revenue on a percentage basis. What we're proposing or the philosophy we, what, what we've heard is that the procedure would contract for specific dollar amounts, not for a pro-rata share necessarily. On the accountability side, the current ordinance does not specify accountability mechanisms to the level that council would prefer or that we've heard council would prefer. And so the proposed, uh, methodology or procedure would be to build accountability mechanisms into contracts. They might be similar across different kinds of contracts or they might be tailored depending on the activity that the recipient, uh, was engaging in. Um, unprecedented economic growth. We've got revenue trend issues. The revenue is going way up. We're not ready to assume that that's the new norm and we think it's imprudent this early to assume that's the new norm. So we want to live within a smaller amount of money and take that excess, propose it for some one-time monies, uh, to fund some one-time type projects which we think support or stimulate additional occupancy tax, tax activity, things that put heads in beds. Um, and we want to be able to allocate... And we want to be able to allocate that based on priority that Council sets. What you might remember is that we might think in terms of, at this point, one-time allocations, but we might want to set some guidelines. We may want to include in a new ordinance, guidelines for future councils for what priorities may be. So, while we're thinking, while we're directly talking about one-time monies and how to prioritize those, we may also want to consider how to assist future councils in prioritizing what might end up being one-time monies in the future. That's a little deeper than I intended to go, but the key is be thinking not only of this year, but of future years. Here's our five-year trend. The real significant news here is that 2012 jumped way up. The black line is a trend that Excel draws for us. That line wouldn't be even that steep if we didn't have the jump up in 2012. Based on what we've collected in the first quarter of this year, it could be dramatically higher. On this slide, we see the actual revenue for 2012, 2.1 million. The current budget for the year we're in now, 1.575. The first quarter alone for this year was 650,000. If that trend holds true, we will be in excess of 2.6 million for this year. So, we've got this huge revenue jump. We think we need to actively manage it. Now's a good time to set a mechanism that allows Council to allocate on a priority This is, this slide, on this slide, we're going to talk about what the current situation is for expenditures. The CVB contract, CVB activity, their allocation, under that 1.575 amount, we have allocated 693,000. Civic Events, 708,000. SAC Act, 73, almost 74,000. $50,000 to Fort Concho, $50,000 to the Texas Bank Sports Complex for a total of 1,575. The keys here is, this is what's in the budget. If we intend to move forward with this as is, we're going to need to amend the ordinance, even if this is all we do. Because the ordinance is allocated based on the percentages we see up here on the slide. The ordinance says 47% to CVB, 48% to Civic Events and 5% to SAC Act. What we've done this year in the budget is we've captured a portion of that new revenue and allocated $100,000 to the, to the fort and to the Texas Bank Sports Complex. And so, we're going to need to update the ordinance, even if you don't want to change anything else. However, if we take a fresh look at these numbers, this slide attempts to take a little more of a fresh look at it. The draft CVB contract we have is for 795,000. For example, what's in the budget is this 693, but what was, but we actually distributed to them in excess of a million last year, in excess of a million dollars last year.
That's correct, right?
Okay. So, because the way the ordinance is set up, regardless of what we budget to be distributed, the ordinance says thou shall take 47% and distribute it. What we're saying is, this unprecedented growth time, we need to be managing those resources. There's public resources, we need to manage them effectively. So, if we do hit...
Michael, let me stop you there.
Yes, sir.
Now, you're saying last year, we contributed over a million dollars?
Yes, sir.
2012. So, here's, back up to that slide a second and let me try to help flesh this out a little bit. So, go back one, go back to the one where you show 650,000 came in the first quarter. Here's the deal. He's budgeting 1.6 million, 1.575? And so, then, then when you roll forward and he says, okay, I'm going to give 693,000 to CVB, that's 47%, 693 is 47% of 1,575, okay? Under the ordinance, we're saying, we're going to give them 47% of what we get, okay? So, now back up to my, to my quarter, okay? So, in the first quarter, we got 653,000. We think we're going to, we have an opportunity to hit 2.6 million. So, they would, instead of getting 693,000 budgeted, they would get roughly 1.2 million, you know, closing in on double what your budget calls for because the tax is creating so much additional revenue. So, the idea is, would, would we, wouldn't we be better to do something that, that keeps this number from fluctuating up and down quite so much, come up with, with standard numbers? So, in this case, he's saying, how about using 795,000 as the number regardless of what happens with the taxes? But then, it's hotel motel occupancy tax. So, what we're wanting to do is tie our, well, make sure that everything we do is a legal expenditure under what the hotel motel occupancy tax is required to be spent on. But how do we help put more people in hotels? So, if we do some things to Fort Concho to make sure that it's taken care of, then we get visitation at Christmas at Old Fort Concho, we get visitation at Fort Concho Days, we get, you know, those kinds of events and that helps put people in motel beds. And it allows us to spend some money on the infrastructure that the city has to help the, and so, the idea is, instead of putting 1.2 million to the Convention and Visitors Bureau, what if we put a standard contract in place that moves up or down based on performance? And then Civic Events is basically a city department. You don't want a department, I mean, in other words, Street and Bridge doesn't get 708,000 in their budget and then if taxes are up, they get 1.1 million in their budget. And that's what's going on with Civic Events, is that, that, that group gets a bigger budget depending on what's going on. So, again, what we're saying is, look, we budget the amount to run Civic Events and then we say, okay, now, go to the Coliseum, for instance, right now. If you go in the Coliseum, we're about to have the rodeo and it's a great big event, puts a lot of people in, in town, but the bathrooms are in desperate repair need, okay? Need to be not only repaired, but, but remodeled. The front lobby area is, all the ceiling tiles need, not all, but most of the ceiling tiles need to be replaced. So, what do we do to make sure that the Coliseum, it would be, a way we could handle this money is by using some of the, the windfall, the fact that the economy's really picked up and we're creating additional dollars. Instead of handing out 1.2 million when it's budgeted at 700,000, what if we hand out 800,000 and then budget 300,000 to go take care of the Coliseum so that we keep putting heads in beds? Or what if, it's that kind of thought process. Should we be looking at this and amending the ordinance to allow us to do some things with wayfinding so people can find the museums, people can find Fort Concho, so forth, people can find the convention center, the Coliseum? You've seen the presentations on wayfinding. Anyway, that's the big idea is, should we change somewhat how we do this and then spend money on infrastructure and particularly on events and, and, what, venues, finally got the word, on venues to make sure that we keep as a city providing venues that pull people to the community and support the efforts there. So, maybe you spend money on McNeese Convention Center, the sign out here that needs to be updated or all of those kinds of things.
So, even, even on the first quarter this year, even the prediction that we're going to have an excess of, is it 653,000? How sure are we, is that the way it's just looking? You're just estimating, right?
You're right. It's just an estimate.
Just looking at the last six to nine months and how much they've been above normal and then saying, look, you know, it's, it's, for instance, your budget for the year is 1.6 million, 1.575 and you, you approached half of that in the first three months.
Well, I think the crux of this too is that, you know, we would live off the budget and then when it's done, when we have the money in the bank, that's when it comes back and says, okay, now, we've got 653,000, 285,000, whatever it is, and this is what we want to do with it. So, we wouldn't pre, we wouldn't pre-spend it. We would only spend it after, correct?
Correct. In fact, you're already there.
And the risk on that for the city could be, could be that when tax dollars go down, if the hot money goes down, which at some point it will, we would be on the hook to pay CVB the 790,000. And that would be our risk and hence, there's a risk and reward opportunity.
And that can be set up as well differently.
Hang on, I'm losing, I'm losing control, folks.
I apologize.
Okay, Ms. Farmer's been patiently...
Oh, you're right. You know what? She has. I've been watching her.
So, Ms. Farmer...
I don't want to spend everything that we have this windfall that we're gaining. I just do not want to grant more money. I agree that it should be the fixed amount, but your list of items that you wanted to do, I want to point out that Fort Concho is a huge draw for our city. It is a huge heads in beds, just like our rodeo, but we always come up short money to make necessary repairs and roofs that are needed at Fort Concho. And I would a whole lot rather see us, if we're bent on spending it, that those funds go to...
Today?
Fort Concho.
Outstanding. Today, the, today, the discussion's not about that. It's, it's about whether or not you want to have the money to argue about.
Yes.
Okay.
And that would be a motion on my part.
Okay, so, you make a motion to amend...
I will make a motion to amend the ordinance.
To allow...
To set a set amount and to allow the excess to...
To become, to become something that Council...
It, it, if, can I...
Let's see what she's, put her thing through, what she's doing.
Well, I want to allow the excess during windfall times to be spent in, in areas such as Fort Concho, the Coliseum, other city facilities to be used on...
And Council to be decided, to decide at that time after the money's in hand.
After the money's in hand? Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Can I, maybe, this might, may give some thought. I mean, I guess, I'm in full agreement on that, that what I would be interested in is, I would like for the ordinance, when it comes back, the change in the ordinance to have a relatively clear definition of what we would consider viable, not that it's, we're going to list on the ordinance saying you can only do the Coliseum roof, the Fort Concho, the this, but that there's a definition of what that would, of what would fit in that box as considered, that would qualify for this hot revenue.
It would fall under the guidelines of what puts heads in beds.
Bedhead.
Or beds and heads.
Did I get that right?
You said it right. I said it wrong.
Okay. Well, okay. Discussion and possible action on recommended revisions. I'm a, what I think you're going to be doing is providing direction...
Direction to come back with an ordinance and then we can tweak at that time.
That sounds more likely.
And that's what's going to happen here. I had to go back and reread because you can't, you can't, we can't get to specificity, but we can get to, here's what we want you to bring us back.
Right. And I, I just don't want to spend the increase of the funds. Let's stay within budget and be conservative, you know, in our spending.
Okay, Mr. Alexander was trying to speak.
Yeah, I can take, you know, ideas are such that if you put an idea out there, we can modify it and keep thinking and that's just how creativity works. I'm looking at a possibility here of creating a situation that can help our city down the road when times aren't so good. And if we can take the extra, we've been calling this the windfall monies, the extra monies that we're getting because of an oil boom going on. If we can take and save, put away half of that money, then we can have the money in times, when times are bad, when times, in a marketing situation for the company, if times are bad, that's when you want to start advertising.
And you do, yes, and, and under all of your, under each one of your funds, including this fund, you have a reserve amount. So, what I'm going to ask you to do is, is speak specifically to, you know, right now, you have a 90-day reserve, okay? So, is there, is there some reserve that you want to see met because of this?
Not necessarily.
I mean, my sense of it was the, my sense of it was, I wanted just to spend money on infrastructure because that is long-term and it's, you see what I mean?
Sure, dude.
Saves, and it saves you having to come up with that money elsewhere.
But what I'm, what I'm thinking here is, let's say, three years from now, we have a really bad year because we have a, another recession hits us, that's when you want to advertise. When we have a really good year, you don't want to spend all your marketing money trying to get people to San Angelo and tell them about San Angelo in a good year. It's already happening. The momentum's with us. We're going to have a hard time handling the volume we have already. So, in a bad year, we would have a reserve, maybe it's one-third, maybe it's one-fourth, even one-eighth, I don't care, but we begin spending this marketing money at that point to get people to San Angelo in a recession. And that keeps San Angelo more stable, it, it's more effective. And when we come out of that recession, it tends to be a bigger bounce up. And so, that's a, that's a marketing strategy that I want to keep an eye on and equip ourselves with that.
And the direction you're trying to give them for looking at, making some changes to this...
90-day reserve is, is not the way to look at it. It's to put it in a savings account and leave it for a year in which we don't get, the monies don't come in and then we use it to, what we would do is, we would use the money to make up the differences in the years we have a, see Kendall said, we have a risk. Well, that's when we take the reserve money and use it to apply and then we lower our risks because we have reserve money. So, I'm looking for some reserve money.
He heard you. Mr. Morrison?
Have we seen all the slideshow yet? We kind of got stopped in the middle of it. I'd like to see everything you've got up there, Michael.
Okay. Shall I proceed now, Mayor?
Let me make sure Mr. Silves is good to go with that.
Before we lose these numbers, even on the CVB contract, we're bumping them up 100, you know, $100,000. Is that, is that keeping it in line with the 47% for...
It actually, you know, it's, remember that last year, they were at 47% budgeted to get 600 and something and they got over a million. So, the 795 is less than they got last year, more than the budget, more than the budget calls for, so it's a bump. But if, if we hit 2.6 million, it'll be quite a bit less than 47%, okay?
That's a good question.
But it'll be a number that's static or that you start contracting off of. So, they know what they're going to get. They don't go up or down and, and we know what we're going to spend and allows us, if there's an excess, to be able to take care of some of these infrastructure needs.
I've slept since the last time we did this, but I don't remember them getting over a million dollars, but that's just me. I just don't remember that.
You're right. And that's because the budget was prepared based on this revenue estimate of 1,575, which looking back is, is probably a good sound number. It's a good, sound, safe number. But the reality is, it's going to come in much higher and did come in much higher last year. And the result is that because you have an ordinance which says, take 47% of it and send it over to the CVB, if you have $2 million, that's 940,000. And we're thinking that we, we broke $2 million last year. So, last year at 2.1, we sent them $1 million. If we're going to get 2.6, we're going to send them in excess of that, 1.2 to 1.3 million dollars. We think we need to actively manage, instead of just not thinking about it and just sending it over. We think we need to actively manage what is turning into a larger than anticipated resource. You bet.
Let me let you finish your slideshow for Mr. Morrison.
Okay. The key here is, if we bump the CVB contract to 795, if we, we haven't really done anything in this presentation with Civic Events and SAC Act, SAC Act slash SAPAC, remember, SAC Act will one day be replaced with SAPAC. But, you know, a reasonable kind of approach would be to say, Civic Events, you've got a building, what is an appropriate, what is an appropriate amount to appropriately maintain these resources? We probably need to ask that question, whether it's this year or in preparing next year's budget, we need, we need to know what that is. With SAC Act, we need to work through that. Remember that contained in the SAC Act, it, one of their sub recipients has been the museum. We contemplated as we dealt with SAPAC in breaking that out as a separate item. So, we need to remember the museum. We've introduced Fort Concho and the Texas Bank Sports Complex into our routine allocation methodology. If we go with these numbers and it totals 1.7 million and we actually hit 2.6, we're still going to have an excess of 900,000. I think we just need to be prudent, manage where we think these contracts or these, these budgets need to be up here to perform the services we expect and not just let this excess go. We need to manage the excess as well as managing all of these. And, and so, the timing has been fortunate that Council has been talking about contracts for specific amounts. That coincides very well with this jump up, this spike in the revenues. That coincides very well with this jump up, this spike in the revenues. And so it's, it's, it's an appropriate time to move to that methodology.
I have a question. Could we make the C V B and the civic events that dollar amount on the percentage, but not based on an average, say a three-year average of what the hotel motel has been in previous years? And that way, they can do a budget and base it on that average, a three-year average, I think would be.
You can, but you also can choose your $800,000 and, and contract with them for three years based on what you think the number ought to be. So in other words, if you used a three-year average and then you sign a three-year contract, you'd say, okay, 800,000 is the average.
And that's it.
That's, that's where we're going to be.
And that's all you're going to get.
And then in three years, we're going to do this again.
Yes.
And that kind of a thing too.
That way in the ordinance, it adjusts by the average.
Yep.
And we don't have to amend the ordinance every time.
I think the key is here that we, what looks like an increase, for example, on C V B is actually a decrease from what they actually did receive and what they will receive if we don't make a change. And even with these changes, we've got this significant projected excess that we need to manage. In addition to all that, we talked about, I think Councilman Hirschfeld talked about budgeting for finite amounts and having an excess projected. And then when that excess comes to fruition, utilizing that cash in hand for projects, you're already there. Because of the positive experience we had last year and because of, frankly, since this facility has been remodeled, the experience has been getting a little better. You have an, a pre-audited fund balance in Civic Events Fund of 670,000. If you set aside 90 days, that'd be 500,000, leaving a surplus of 160,000. In the, the C V B has also been, because of the structure of the current ordinance, receiving that windfall. Under the proposed contract, they're going to return a portion of their very large fund balance to be allocated subject to a process where council would determine what the priorities were. They're going to return to the city approximately, well, a number in excess of $300,000, which means that here in the next few weeks, we could have an excess of.
Right around a half a million.
Half a million dollars to be allocated based on priorities that council sees. And that's when we, once we determine that this is an excess, I mean, these are just examples. This fund balance in 90 days, maybe 80 is appropriate. Maybe 180 is appropriate. We need to have that discussion.
Go back to that $300,000 return. Explain that.
Well.
What do they return?
Well, this fund balance that we have in our fund is because we budgeted a certain amount, allowed civic events to spend a certain amount, but the revenues went way up higher. And so they had an excess of revenue over expenditures. Well, the same thing happened at the C V B. They budgeted a certain amount. They controlled their budget. They worked within that budget, but the revenues came in higher. So they have an amount which exceeds what they need for fund balance also. And so rather than allowing it just to sit there, we think we need to capture it and put it to work. And they are in favor of putting that money to work also. We've asked them what their opinion is for excess fund balances, and they have provided us with a list of things that they would like to see. Some of these are things that they have provided. I think the key is entering into a process with council where we gather information for what we think everybody'd like to see, and then we make a determination.
Do you remember the, just the council meeting last time or the time before when the lady from San Antonio and Howard Taylor from the museum?
Last time.
And the cultural district study was taken care of and all that? Do you remember that? They said one of the key problems we have is the wayfinding system. So, so you could use this money to help with the wayfinding system, is a portion of it. If you did that and that increased tourism, then the increase in tourism puts more people in hotels. It kind of feeds on itself to help us. So that's the kind of thing that, that, you know, I don't want, I don't want the C V B or civic events or the arts groups, SACAC, SAPAC. You know, I, I don't want us to do anything with those monies that doesn't help those organizations.
Long-term.
Long-term. But if we, you know, if we have a roof that needs repair at the Coliseum, and that's one of the things we do, then long-term, that helps everybody in the tourism business and in the events business and so forth. So that's the idea is what do we do that, I mean, we'll make sure we're very disciplined and that the ordinance requires the discipline. Doesn't allow any flexibility, requires us to spend it on things that help tourism continue to be generated. So.
It's a reinvestment. After this, this spike that we've got in hot money right now, it's a potential reinvestment in to ensure that, that we've got a better asset later on than we do right now, be it the Coliseum roof, be it the wayfinding, things like that, that can help make the whole C V B process, you know, in five years, maybe a little bit easier. So.
Well, what started out as comments about accountability mechanisms, making sure that we're getting good value for public money, has blossomed into multiple changes. And before we get too far down along that path, staff wanted to make sure that we were on the, first of all, on the right path. Counsel by consensus thought we were going in the right direction. And so what we're asking for today, what I'm asking for, is your direction on these issues. So, one, you want us to update the occupancy tax ordinance to allow council more flexibility and accountability with annual and one-time allocations. That's what we're hearing, that you do want that. You do want flexibility both for the annual and the one-time allocation. Second point, staff needs to propose contracts, bring to council contracts with C V B and SACAC slash SAPAC in accordance with this revised methodology. We want to build the accountability mechanisms in. We want a contract for a finite amount, not an allocation or a pro-rata amount. Or we want to propose something which is generally inconsistent with what you've, what you've said to us. The third point, we want to amend the budget so that the budget reflects what we're doing in these other areas. And fourth, we want to schedule a discussion where we cover the legal restrictions associated with spending occupancy tax money and where we determine council's priorities for that one-time funding activity. In other words, we want to bring back the laundry list of everything that needs to be done. The roof here, the roof there, the bathroom rooms, the, the wayfinding. We want to talk about what's legal, big, big boundaries, what's, what is legal to spend the money on, and then smaller boundaries. What is council's priority? And we may want to think about that. This is kind of links up to this first point, both this one-time and in future one-time opportunities. How do we want to spend that money or set that priority? So again, we want to come back. It's really a mini C I P, a mini capital project consideration related specifically to occupancy tax. So that's what we're seeking. A, are we on the right track in these four areas? B, staff, bring us back these progress items.
Okay, Mr. Morrison?
I agree with what you're doing there, Michael. I think it makes sense. For the last five or six years, I have been preaching a rainy day fund to save some of the money that we are taking in. And what I see here, if this is extra money, we need to create a rainy day fund. Yes, we are in fact having more money come in. We are receiving more income. But with this more income, there will be an influx of people that will be hitting our town. And we don't know how many thousands more people are going to be here next year than are today. And with this influx of people, there are also going to be added expenses that we will need. So I would say let's set some caps on the hotel tax. Let's take care of the, the groups that we take care of, and let's put the rest of it in a rainy day fund. Let's put it in a savings account because we've got a lot of unknown expenses that's going to hit us in the next year or two with what's coming down the road. An extra, an extra income is going to equal extra expenses. I'd rather be, I'd rather be prepared for it than to be, than to be delegating every dime we take in to go to a specific purpose. That's my two cents.
Okay. The argument, I would say to you that even what Mr. Alexander and what Mr. Morrison said is consistent with what else has been said. Basically, what you need to do in accordance with what you've heard is make some updates to this, set up that the discussion, get the legal limits, set up that the discussion includes how much money should be set aside and held and how much money should, should be spent on any of the projects. And that none of that should be done until it's in a retroactive manner. The money's in hand, okay? And then we say, okay, we have half a million dollars. Do we want to put that in a rainy day fund? Do we want to put half of that towards wayfinding and half of it in a rainy day fund? Or, or what do we want to do? So it's, everything that's being asked up here could be discussed or determined by a future council. Just put that in as one of the things that could be done with the money, okay? And, and then, and then you're able to move forward with the ordinance. So, Mr. Silves?
Michael, what do you tell the taxpayer out there who's, who says that the percentages, especially the top two, C V B and civic events, are way too high? What do you tell them that, you know, what has, and I understand tourism. I understand this is what it's all about. But what do you tell them when they ask, what has the C V B done for us? Whatever they brought in? An off-road racing idea, maybe the drag boat races. What do you tell them that constitutes us giving them 47%, almost half of the budget? You know, what do you tell those folks out there who feel that way?
Well, your comment is right on the mark for what we've been hearing from council, and that is, what we've heard in the past from council is that we do want greater contact with C V B. We want to know more about what they're doing, using those dollars for. We want to be sure that they're using those dollars to enrich the experience in this community in such a way that it puts heads in beds or, or that they're actually doing upfront promoting kinds of things that brings people to town.
What new business have they brought in is what they're asking.
Yeah. So part of what I want, part of what I want to say is that is part of what is trying to be accomplished here by saying it's 795,000 a year for the next three years. It's not 47%. In other words, you're, when you're saying to that person, what we've done is looked at the work they've done. We've come to terms with them. We've entered an agreement that they get $800,000 a year for the next three years. And then they'll have to come in front of a council and say, we want another contract. And that council will be able to say, well, have you earned $800,000 a year or have you done things?
Have you performed?
Have you performed? And so that is the mechanism. I mean, in other words, this, this approach is providing the mechanism you're talking about for the taxpayer. Because instead of getting a million dollars because it's 47% of it or whatever, they're getting a contracted amount. And then they come up for term and, and you have debate and discussion and negotiation based on whether or not you feel like you're getting what you're supposed to be getting for it. So. And the same thing with civic events, whether it's the department people in the organization or the folks that are involved in civic events. It's the same thing. You'd be saying to them, here's your budget and, and you're doing a great job with the buildings. Or, or it's, it's, you can see you need more for the next few years, or you're not doing a great job and we want to reallocate that money. So this approach is, is allowing that accountability standard that you're asking for.
And the C V B is eager to, one of the things they've proposed in the contract is quarterly meetings with some group, either it could be a subcommittee of council or something, or a committee that council participates in, selected council members participate in. They're eager to show, they believe they're adding value and bringing good value for what the city sends over there. They're eager to tell that story, but they're also eager to shape their activity based on council priorities. So I think, I think you're going to find a willing participant. They, they're actively trying to provide good value, eager to tell their story. And so I think you've, you're going to find an eager partner there.
Michael, have you enough direction to, I mean, are you hearing, you've heard from everybody up here, so?
I think what we're hearing is that this, for all four points, this is the way this needs to go and we should continue moving.
And we'll take a look at what you bring back and help revise and refine until we get to where we want to be.
Accountability.
I'll bring up public. Okay, let me ask for public input on this item while we're on it. Okay, Mr. Turner? Mr. Mackin, are you going to go next?
Yes, my name is Jim Turner, and I think to simplify, one of the last things you're, this does allow you to put a paper performance type of mechanism in place. You can't do that with a flat percentage. So this is progress for accountability and connecting with the public to what's going on with these groups. Second thing is, we're right coming on to when we're going to be getting into the capital budget, the capital improvement plan. One of the things that probably should be done for this year and in the future is we have, a number of these projects are also going to be in the capital improvement plan. And one of the items in the capital improvement plan is supposed to be possible funding sources. We should be going down right now and identifying, these are eligible for hot funding. So if we have a great year with hotel motel tax, we can do these that way instead of having to take it out of general fund, half-cent sales tax, grants, whatever. And we can use hot money also as seed money and matching funds for grants and other things like that. But this needs to be coordinated with the other planning documents like the capital improvement plan so that when we say we got hot money projects, here they are in the capital improvement plan, and we look at those every five years anyway. So those are going to be, to use an overused term, they're going to be shovel-ready by the time the money's there. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Mr. Mackens?
Good morning. I think we kind of discussed the difference between civic events and, and C V B. And of course, the arts is a much smaller percentage. And I just want to remind you while you're thinking about all of this that from a budgetary standpoint, in particular with where we are with the new developments of SAPAC, when you're talking about that budget from our side, it's really 10 different budgets that we try to coordinate for that allocation that we administer on behalf of the city. And so it's not, it's not money that we use for, that the arts use for salaries or brick and mortar projects or things like that. Any windfall we experience just increases the marketability and the qualitative aspect of the program that we provide to the community. Also, taking into account in that discussion, in particular where the arts are, are related, when we look at our mission statement of desirable mid-sized cities, other cities are continuing even through this boom in the arts in particular to be on a percentage basis. When you've got 15% going to Abilene, which is the maximum required by law, when you've got a $90 million performance hall in Midland Odessa, it kind of puts the relativity of our projects in perspective. And so I think that's still an area where in regards to being proactive towards that mission statement, we might want to, you know, separate the arts out a little bit and, and look at them a little differently.
And I will be supporting that. I'm not happy with the allocation right now. I'm just letting you know.
I'll be glad to.
I think it's coming forward to the next meeting.
I'll be glad to identify you, Mr. Alexander, anytime you'd like to speak.
It's, it's concurrent to that. And.
Mr. Alexander, I'll be glad to identify you anytime you'd like to speak. Okay? I think that some discussions, and I'm going to, I'm going to get council to weigh in, and it's obvious where Mr. Alexander fits on this. But, but I, I think that your number has been referred to in previous discussions with, on all of the SAPAC discussion. So, so, you know, I'll remind council that basically we've talked about a 5% number for SAPAC as the transition occurs and an additional 2% number for the museum.
Right.
But that they have accountability mechanisms.
Yes.
So kind of remember that. And so there's a structure there. We just need to be sure as we move this process forward that we keep those discussions germane to this process.
Absolutely.
And so I would ask that you guys, when you're advocating, remember what discussions have we had? What have we said? And your 5% number was going to be able to move up or down based on what you did with it.
Right, right. Incentivized.
And your 2% number could move up or down at the museum based on what you did with it. And we made sure that the museum wasn't lost in the transition.
Absolutely.
So we all need to remember, what did we say in those discussions? And those need to be part of this process. And, and this, this interchange allows Mr. Dane and others to remember that and, and kind of make sure we pull things forward appropriately based on what we've already said. Okay? Other council members? Mr. Silves?
You know, and looking at these numbers, and, and I understand us holding back, you know, issuing funds in the, you know, like in a three-year contract, one-year contract. But either Charlotte or Dwayne, remind me either Charlotte or Dwayne, remind me when we came up with these percentages? I mean, the 47%, 48%? And the reason I ask that is because I think those are way too high.
Those were set previous years.
Okay, but with the proposed, I mean, with the projected revenues that are coming to us the next year, two, three year down the line, I mean, these numbers are way too high, you know? And that's what I wanted, wanted to ask, when these numbers-
1989.
These percentages came away before my time, but, that's one thing I want you to look at.
2004 is when they were adjusted.
Adjusted 2004, okay. But SEPAK, or the arts have been established-
I'd be interested in tweaking those, because I think-
So we've been doing this.
Well, I think, I think we're saying the same thing, with these numbers, with explosion of these numbers getting so high, they do require our, your oversight, and-
Well, this debate and discussion, and you have, I think you've got a good opportunity to move us forward. Is there any further public input? Okay.
I'd just-
Okay, Mr. Hirschfeld?
Just one more comment, and I, I'll go back to, there's pros and cons to having percentage base versus a fixed budget, and I like the approach of the fixed budget, because I'd look at it from a business perspective, I mean, that's, that's a positive, you know where your budget's going to be, you get to allocate for that, and there's risk reward. And, you know, it's who's carrying the risk, and who's carrying the potential reward. I believe that the excess that's going to come from that will benefit the arts group, because it will be part of this entire package, is, you know, the wayfinding. That will be a very positive for, not just for the Fort Concho and the Coliseum, but it will be for SEPAK. I believe everybody can win. And so again, I, you know, the perspective that I want to see on this is, how can not just one group, or whatever, but how can we as a city try to take advantage of this, and move forward in the positive direction?
Mr. Morrison, and then Mr. Alexander. Mr. Morrison?
Well, I would just like to plug the museum and Fort Concho, because I think when our SEPAK discussions last year, I think the museum took the short end of the stick. So, in your figures that you put together, I would ask that you give great consideration both to Fort Concho and to the museum, because they also are very important to our tourism.
Outstanding. Well, that's more than one council member on Fort Concho, and I remember that currently they're getting roughly 2% of your five, currently the museum's getting roughly 2% of the five you receive, and so by going to 5% and leaving them at 2, it was trying to leave them in a stable place, isn't that right?
Right. This past grant cycle, the museum received 30,000, and 2% would actually be closer, because of the windfall we've experienced, closer to 42,000, I believe. And in the interest of partnership, too, with SEPAK moving forward, once that facility is open, because we will no longer be doing an allocation process per se to those other core groups, it will be more of a joint marketing fund within SEPAK, once that facility is operational and open, it becomes much easier for us to come to you guys, and as a council, and say, we think X is what we really need to effectively market this facility. So that conversation becomes easier, once we move forward.
Here's what we want to do, here's our marketing plan, here's what it would cost.
Right.
Mr. Alexander?
I think when you look at allocations, that you have to start from the 35,000-foot level, and look down and say, what are we trying to accomplish, and who's getting what? And Daniel brings up the point that we have a vision statement, it talks about desirability, and, you know, at the same time, we have a problem in San Angelo, we may be losing our innocence, I guess is the way I may say it this time, but we have a, an oil industry coming in, it's a lot rougher and tougher, and you look at the yards, they're not pretty companies to have out there, it's just different look, it's starting to look a little more like Odessa on the north side of town. And we have to counter that, that look, I think, we have to try to counter that look, and we have to look and see what our vision is, become the most desirable city, mid-sized city in the state of Texas, and say, you know, the arts getting 5% is not, it's not even close to where it should be. And that's where I'm coming from, I'm saying, you know, with Midland, and for sure, Abilene getting 15% towards the arts, that is closer, it may not be that we need to do that, but 5% is out of range. From 35,000 feet, I can see that, I don't need to know the details, and we seem to be, our mindset right now is at around the 5% level, and it shouldn't be, it should be much higher. We need to reset, take a look, reallocate, and think again.
Outstanding. I would say to you, in some sense, though, remember, you really have gone from 5 to 7, okay? In the discussions you've had, now you can now make the case that it ought to be higher than 7, but you really have said, we want to go forward with 5 for SEPAK and 2 for the museum. So you've historically been at 5, you're trying to get to 7, you could make the case, and I'm just wanting you to compare off of 7, as you move us forward. Okay, is there anything else? Because I think we've given them direction, I think we're in a fairly good place.
And I think that the museum and Fort Concho fits that same look from way up high, what do they need?
Gosh, I think you've got to be getting fairly clear instruction on the museum and the fort both being important.
And I also want to make sure that the Texas State Sports Complex, the 50,000 they're getting, what are they generating in hot revenues now? What part is theirs? Is it 100,000? Is it more, less? You know, that's something I'll have a question about later, that might need to represent a truer number, because we have, we're operating in a deficit out there with taking care of the grass, and I think it's around 300,000 a year, 200,000, it's between there.
Between 2 and 250, that we're-
So 2 and 250 is our deficit out there in spending, and so I want to see, I want to look closer at that amount as well, and see if we can get it closer to our expenditures.
Super. You okay with your direction?
Sounds like move ahead as presented.
I'm going to move us on then to item number 14. This is the discussion of impossible action related to the transfer of water from the South Pool to the North Pool for the city's use of water at Twin Buttes Reservoir. Presentation by our interim water utilities director, Ricky Dixon. How long have you been with the city?
22 years.
Okay, it's nice, that interim thing, that's cool.
Yeah, something different. I like it. Good morning again, Mayor, Council, City Manager. I'm just going to kind of back up a little bit here, and go from where we were, where we are today, and kind of the conditions that we're in, and then we'll just start from there. Back last year, as you remember, we began pumping, the records of 5 can find the full-fledged pumping, three pumps running was August 3. At that time, the elevation of the South Pool is 1924.82, pretty close to what it is today, it's at 1924.66, so not a lot of change there. The North Pool elevation, however, when we began pumping, was 1885.89. At 1885, it's basically dead storage, no water can pass through the gates by gravity at Twin Buttes into Nazworthy. So, that caused a pretty big hit on Lake Nazworthy itself, as you can remember, we were still having downstream releases and municipal use at that time. So it, basically, when we started pumping, Nazworthy was at 1869.34, and normal operating capacity is 1871.2, so we were down a little over a foot and a half. We pumped continuously, basically, through October the 15th, on our pumping, but on the 28th of September, we had a big rain event that changed all the numbers. But at that time, before the rain event, we had pumped the South Pool elevation to 1915.55, almost 10 feet. North Pool elevation was still maintained at 1886.4. It actually gained about a half a foot during the pumping operation. We were able to, at the same time, not cause any more detrimental effect to Lake Nazworthy during the pumping operations, and maintain our downstream releases that are required in our municipal use. Those together for August and September was about 702 acre feet that we used as a city in our downstream releases, and we were able to, Nazworthy actually decreased 38 hundreds of a foot during those pumping operations. Now, I said a lot of that to get to where we're at today. The South Pool is at 1924.66, the North Pool is at 1890.72, so we have an initial 5 feet this year, than we had when we started pumping last year. And Lake Nazworthy is at 1870.44, kind of our winter time level, if we have any rain events, we've got some storage capacity to leave there. Now, another important thing before we get to where we're, I guess we're going to get to, in the last, since December the 1st through February the 5th, we have inflow into the South Pool. It has come up 2.5 feet in those two months. If this trend continues, in another month, we're going to have natural spring flow, or natural flow between the South Pool and the North Pool. So I think that's important. I don't know how long it will last, it could last several months. As you remember, last year, we had flow through the equalization channel up until just a few weeks before we started pumping. So that's something to keep in mind before we decide when and if we're going to pump. So, that's kind of where we are, and I'm just looking for direction from y'all.
Historically, I'm going to, I'm going to pick up on where you were, and go, historically, it stops somewhere in the May-June timeframe. The natural flow, because in the wintertime, usage goes down, and in any winter rains, we get some new spring activity on the South Concho, and-
Sure.
Those kinds of things. So a few things I'm going to try to get some input from y'all on, is, that's kind of historical, so it wouldn't probably make much sense for us to be starting to pump in April or May, but then we start having really evaporation issues, and so-
And the city water usage starts going up in April, typically.
And then we, last year, started a few weeks after it stopped flowing, and the point of, that the council's trying to make now is, let's see if we can't bump that forward to try to come a little closer to when it stops flowing, we go ahead and start pumping, and try to move it forward. So I think we're trying to move it forward some weeks, not some months, maybe it's six weeks sooner than it was last time, so, or something along those lines. But the other thing, council gave a lot of direction about, we wanted to pump out of the South Pool, but we didn't want to ruin the South Pool, or-
Correct.
Ecologically, really damage it. So what is our feedback on the 10 feet we took out of it, okay? What have we done to it? Is it, you know, do we-
I don't know, Mayor.
Okay. Is there any, any thought on that? Because there's, we still want to give the basic same direction, that we want to pump out of the South Pool into the North Pool, but we also don't want, we had given guidance that we would take something like 40% of the water that was there, and I'm trying to make sure that as we give in guidance, we go back to the first time we gave in guidance, and be fairly consistent with what we say, and not, you know, we're not trying to drain the South Pool, we're trying to utilize water out of it to a certain level, and then kind of go, okay, it's, it still has to be viable also, and is that still the council's desire, that we keep it in a viable place? So I'm trying to make sure we wrap back around and do the same thing. But so I think the direction we're trying to give you, and I'm going to make sure council weighs in-
Sure.
But the direction we're trying to give you is, let's start a little quicker.
Okay.
Get everything in place, where you started basically around August the 1st last year, and I think we want you to start sometime in June this year, instead of August the 1st, so that we are moving water instead of watching it evaporate out of the South Pool. So I think that's part of what we're trying to ask you to do. And then the second thing is, though, we still, we still have a desire, Mr. Dixon, that we not empty the South Pool.
Okay.
And so by starting earlier, we may, you know, we may reach the point this year, where we didn't last year, between August and October, depending on the rain events that occur, and depending on how hot the summer is, and depending on water usage, and on and on, all the variables.
Sure.
But we may reach a point this year, if you start in June instead of August, we may reach a point where we're wanting somebody to be telling us, hey, let me tell you what you're doing to the South Pool, okay? Where we didn't get there last year.
Right.
Last year, we started in August, ended in October, had a rain event September 28th, did not do any damage to the South Pool. This year, I think y'all may have more, more of that you have to keep your eye on.
Okay.
So to me, it's the two things, we want to move forward, the timing, and we want to remind you that it was important to us that we, we save as much evaporation as possible, move as much water, make one deeper so it doesn't evaporate as much, and all those things, but we're going to maybe have to really pay attention to what we're doing to the South Pool.
Very well.
Okay, and that, hopefully, all of that should let it, let you also be in a place where you can move water from North Pool into Nazworthy, so we don't have that big drawdown-
Right.
-of 2 feet or so on Nazworthy by starting earlier. Okay, now then, start helping me in-
I agree.
Okay. Start helping me with what we want to do, but is there other inputs on this?
All right.
Okay, Mr. Alexander?
There was speculation that the EQ channel, the equalization channel, when we sent water through it, that a lot of that water was sinking into the ground, and I heard some people that should know, and we didn't, we don't really, we didn't know, we didn't measure it ever.
No.
But, but there was a time we were able to measure it last summer, and lo and behold, what I estimated was pretty darn close. 2,000 gallons a minute are going straight underground. That's more water than opening up a fire hydrant full blast, just leaving it, and if we did that in the middle of San Angelo, we'd have a riot on our hands. People'd say, how can you lose that much water and just let it go? Well, we do it already in the equalization channel when the water flows through it. And so, it doesn't flow through the equalization channel all year long, it flows for normally 100 days, but because we lowered the South Pool this summer, it's having to fill up again, so it's not flowing right now. It would flow around January 1st, but it's not right now. So it will start flowing, it'll flow for about 60 days, and we'll lose that water for 60 days. So when we start to pump this water, again, we kick into this loss, and we'll pump that water for three months, and we'll end up losing 900 acre feet, and that's two weeks of water, but 900 acre feet is a lot of water. So I'm proposing that we, and I asked for this last time, I didn't get it as well, what is the cost to put pipes from the South Pool to the North Pool?
Yeah, I want you, I, I think you find out that we have-
We need that information.
I think you'll find out that we are supportive as a council.
And I think, I'm not saying, I'm just saying there's not-
But what we need to do is, we've got to be meeting with the Bureau of Reclamation. We have to be meeting with them, say, this is what we want to do in this equalization channel.
And I agree with that as well.
Are you, are you talking about under the pumping configuration that we have, extending the pipes from end to end?
End to end, 3 miles.
Okay.
Because we're saving-
Let me give you just a little, a little taste of what you're asking.
Okay.
I did check with the pump supplier, and ask the question, if we want to extend the pump discharge line a mile from where it is right now, to get to the bridge where it crosses, the road crosses the equalization channel, that increases the cost of the monthly pumping, pumping fee, $55,000 a month. The mobilization goes up 65,000, the demobilization goes up 40,000, that's just for a mile. From where we're at right now with the end of the discharge pipe, if we took it to the North Pool, is an additional 12,000 and 144 feet, give or take, to get from end to end.
So 2 and 1/2 miles.
Right, from where we're at right now.
And what I'm trying to do is estimate, okay, what is the cost per acre foot here?
Well, you said-
Is it cost-effective to do this?
Well, I mean, first off, it would be nice, when it starts flowing again, to go ahead and get those measurements through USGS or someone. I mean, truly, what are we losing? And, and number one, number two, when it starts flowing, it'll take a period of time for the water underground to be, for the ground to be saturated, to the point that the water's not moving along and just going into the ground. But at some point, there's saturation, and then that's where the flow all the way across comes from.
It never did saturate, 9 was the base, it started at around 20, maybe 24, maybe 19, I'm just saying, it's around 20, so that was a high loss when we first started pumping, and it settled in at 9. So that's a settle-in, it's still, it's not a proven river way, you know, the South Concho River is, it's been there for thousands of years, and it's sealed up. This is a new river, in effect, it's not sealed up.
In theory, in theory, it's sealed up, but I mean, it's still, yeah, it still loses.
It'll lose very little water.
But here, here and there, what I'm saying is, when he had, when he had, if it starts flowing, as he's describing that it will, we could, we could go through this process. In other words, one of the things by starting earlier, is instead of letting it dry out, and then pumping, if we will start pumping at roughly the time we quit flowing, then it will still be wet, still, I mean, in other words, that would help you too, is all I'm trying to say. You're not having to start over saturating the ground, and that would be a healthy way to not lose water in the transfer. Anyway, he's, he gave you the math, it was 55,000 a month.
Yeah, and I'm not aware of any measurements that were actually taken last year.
I am, I am aware, I was watching them, and I actually watched them take a measurement, the city staff, I watched- watched them take these measurements.
With the city water department?
Yeah, they have a little device they can use. There were several ways they took it. It's very difficult, it's not a perfected-
And nine?
Process. But, but it's what I estimate, nine acre feet a day. Now, remember, we were about to shut down car washes and et cetera, and they don't come close to using that much water. And I thought, we have got to streamline our process.
And the process-
Save water.
And the process would cost you 55,000 for a mile. If that holds, it would cost you about 140 or 50,000 a month additional.
That's not counting fuel.
Okay. Well, not counting the other two numbers.
Right.
Right? I mean, it's, it would cost you that much-
Right, just on-
Plus-
Plus.
There you go. The, the mobilization and demobilization.
I think, if you just wanted to figure it by foot, he gave me a price of additional $3.56 cents per foot, per discharge. So that's times three, because there's three pumps. So that number gets enormous.
Say that again, $3 and?
3.56-
There you go.
-per foot is what he priced on the 15,000 feet.
That's what I need to know.
Three times.
Give me that number, and I can go and work numbers when we're not in session.
The 50,000 difference is for all three.
Very well. Yeah, that's, I see Mr. Hirschfield, Mr. Alexander, both of you do a lot of this kind of work, and so I'm glad to see that. Okay, Mr. Morrison.
I would just like to clarify one point.
Okay.
This water is not lost. This water goes into the aquifer, and this aquifer is all under this county, and there are literally thousands of people in this county that depend upon this aquifer for water. So we say that the water is lost. It's not lost, because the aquifers under the ground are just as important as the, as the reservoirs on top of the ground, whether there be rivers, streams, lakes, whales, whatever. So when we say that the water is lost, when it goes from one pool to the next, that is not correct. It just goes into a different area that is used by different people for different reasons. And we've got to have a strong aquifer before we're ever going to have any runoff, of any kind. So get the, let, need to get that, the nomenclature correct.
Okay. Other inputs?
But it is lost through evaporation.
But it is lost through evaporation. So trying to move it to a pool, he's talking about what gets lost in the Equalization Channel not being lost, is the point Mr. Morrison's making. And, but I mean, moving it from one pool to the other to keep a pool deeper so that the surface level is the same and the water's deeper, causes less evaporation and does save water. So that, and that's what we're trying to accomplish.
What was our pumping cost per month?
What I need is for him to understand when he want, when we want him-
Sooner.
120, wasn't it? 120,000 a month?
June 1.
Just the straight pumping cost last year is 66,372 dollars a month.
Okay.
Not counting fuel, mobilization and-
August 1.
Or labor.
How the South Pool is holding up.
Not counting the fuel.
Please make that motion.
So counting fuel, it's more like 100,000 a month, right? That's our true cost.
We pumped, I think, actually 71 days last year, and our fuel cost was 114,393.
Oh, $2,000 a day? Okay, uh, so-
And you, and if you extended it up-
120,000 a month.
Just extending it a mile, the pumping would probably at least double the fuel cost.
Well, I'm, I'm looking at, when do we start this? We haven't really nailed that.
I've got it. He's gonna make a motion.
Mr. Dixon, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion that you begin this process June 15th, and get it going, and then report to us around August 15th.
How we're doing in the South Pool.
Exactly. That's my motion, please.
As we did it last year, and we'll give you further guidance on whether we're gonna change that.
Sooner rather than later.
Okay. I have a motion on the floor from Mr. Silvas, that we do it the way we did it last year, starting June the 15th instead of August the first, and that we get a report back on August the 15th about how the South Pool is doing after 60 days of pumping.
Question.
Yes?
If the water's still running naturally between the pools, why should we be pumping?
So, so he needs to be, but let's, Mr. Morrison, let's see if, I mean, he can make his motion, amend it to say that, assume, because we're, we know that normally it's around the first of June that it stops. So what we're trying to do is go along the lines of when it normally stops, but he could amend the motion to say-
And if he will amend it to say, if the water has stopped natural flow, then we began, I will second that motion.
And I'll make my amendment to read just the way he stated it.
And I just second it.
Okay, so, there you go. If you're not flowing water, you would start June pumping. Mr. Hirschfield.
What is your opinion?
My opinion is, below 1925, there's about 4,000 acre feet of water over there that we can use.
But, okay.
Now-
Starting if we pump them.
We have to, we have to move that water to be able to use it.
Concur with that.
How long does it take you to move 4,000 acre feet?
We moved 3,200 acre feet last year.
In 71 days.
That's correct.
Right? And so, and so 90 days would be July, August, September 15th.
But you're running on almost all of it, drying it up. And if that's not what you want to do, then we need to keep on that.
And that, that's the, that's the equation I want to get back to, is I really-
That's why you want him to come back and tell you in August.
I, I like the idea of June, but I'm not 100% bought into that. I, I'm, I'm really looking at you to kind of come, for you and your, you and Kevin and whoever else to come back and say, really, this is the timeframe I think we should, based upon some of the criteria.
Well, there's a lot of, there's a lot of factors that affect that, you know. There, there's some thought in my mind of, of maybe starting a little earlier, if the flow quit earlier, of course, but the water needs start increasing, the evaporation rates start increasing. Everything started increasing that April-May timeframe. I don't want to get behind the curve. I want to make sure that, I mean, you can't move all this water in one day. So I want to get ahead of the curve and get it moved where it is usable, in case no runoff is another 2011.
So, so what I'm interested in is, again, going back, is I want, I, I, I mean, we've got experts in you, we've got it in Kevin, and the other staff we've got, we've got it in the U.C.R.A., we've got it in lots of other resources that we've got. I really want y'all to kind of help-
But you-
Put that together.
That part makes good sense, Mr. Hirschfield, but you also have a responsibility on, I mean, on the dollars of when you, you know, when you want that kicked in and those kinds of things. I mean, in other words, you could, you've got a motion in a second, let's start with that. And I've got Mr. Farmer and then Mr. Alexander, but I, I've got a motion in a second on an item. But I mean, if you want to give them the flexibility to move it forward, I mean, we make it more contingent on when it quits flowing, and you give him, you know, leeway to put it in place, you know, just leeway to put it in place, and be ready for when the water quits flowing.
And I'm not opposed to the, to the mid-June at all. I mean, I, and, and I'm probably, you know, like what Duane said, I mean, if it's still flowing, then it can maybe slide out, or, and-
But it could get at the same place that we did last year.
There may be other criteria that y'all come up with and say, it's not just when it flows, it needs, you know, right before it stops flowing.
And I think, and a key thing is that we all learned that August the first is after-
Too late.
Yeah. August the first is too late, and so we're just trying to move forward.
I'm happy.
But by all means, don't dry it out either.
Well, that's where he'll report back, but he'll report back. You can make a decision.
I mean, there's a lot of stuff we just have to play as it goes.
Ms. Farmer.
I was reading the minutes from April 2012, and it says, Mr. Worldy informed staff as preparing to begin the project in June, depending on the amount of rain received between now and then, and in the event of stage two drought. We've not mentioned-
Stages?
Stages.
I think-
I think we'll be in drought two by then. My guess.
I just want to make sure that we mention, you know, the stage, because he's saying to begin June 15th, does that include if we're in drought stage?
Well, okay, and again, if it's not flowing, if it's not flowing, would say if we have big rain events before then and it's flowing, then it's kicked back. So that part's taken care of. I would think the only way that this kicks in, Ms. Farmer, is whether or not you want to bring it forward, in other, in other words, into May or earlier in June, because you've entered into a drought level. And, and I'm thinking, I mean, I'm just, you know-
We, we have a flaw in our thinking, and I'm dying over here, because if, if we're flowing a cubic feet, foot per second, that's flowing. That, that thing's running, and a cubic foot a second is nothing. That pump runs at 47 or 48 acre feet a day. So, so maybe it's not cubic feet a sec, maybe it's just an acre foot a day or two. We're gonna flow big water, okay? And we need to, that really moves the water over. I, I don't think you look whether it's flowing or not, you give it an amount. If it's flowing less than-
Good point.
X. And personally, I was started April 1st. I was started March 1st, but April 1st, if you want to prevent Lake Nazworthy from going down this year, and this looks like a broken record here, it looks like a repeat of last year, you have to have the water available in the North Pool to utilize it, to stabilize Nazworthy. And so, starting on June 15th, if we realized on June 15th, we're on the same path as last year, we won't make it. That, that lake will go down. It's just gonna be too much of a strain with 105 degree days and et cetera, severe summer. We, we waited too late, and I've promised people we wouldn't do that. I said, I don't think the council will wait this year. I think they'll, we're gonna recognize we have a problem and move the water earlier.
Okay. I got your-
Current elevation is 1,800 and-
Where are we at? Which one?
Today.
At where?
South Pool.
North Pool?
Oh, sorry.
1,890.72.
1,890.
Five feet higher than last year.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I just-
Five feet higher. Mr., you know, that's the thing too, Paul, that you got to take into account, is that there's water here this year that wasn't here last year. So, I mean, I'm, you know, you're talking about things we need to be thinking about, and, I mean-
I don't have my computer or my graph sign, I can't look at it.
An opinion, I like the, the, the program that's out there, that what, what you've got out there, Johnny, about the mid-June. I just don't want it to stop with just that. I guess, I'm saying-
We need to look at it from now till then.
As our main box.
Right.
Y'all continue pursuing, and y'all may come back and say, no, I think it needs to be closer or further back.
Okay, Mr. Silvas, okay, Mr. Silvas.
And I hear what you're saying, that's why I want to amend my motion to add that we tentatively look at when the flow, I mean, when we start pumping it. I mean, upon his, you know, his expertise, he's the one that's gonna be out there with feet on the ground, knowing what it's doing. So if I can add that somehow, what am I trying to say, Duane?
No later than.
No, hang on, but it's not, yeah, there's, you're not prepared any later than June 1st or June 15th, but you have leeway to-
There you go.
To be prepared earlier, based on the circumstances that-
Yeah, and we, we want to use his recommendations, and if he wants to make that tentative amendment to his motion, I will make a tentative second to the tentative motion.
No, 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 no. That's, y'all got my head hurt.
You just can't be tentative. You gotta do yours wholeheartedly. All right. You go full blast on yours. Does that make sense, Mr. Dixon?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. You know what we're trying to say.
Yes, sir, I do.
In English.
In other words, tell us what we need, because we don't know.
An interim motion? I was told it's an interim motion, that's pretty good. Word of the day.
Here we go. And let me make sure what I'm hearing.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna say it, I don't think there's any way to say it again.
No, this is on another deal. I just want to clarify something. There's a lot of discussion, Paul, of we pumped this and we lost that. When we start pumping again, do you want to know for sure what that number is?
Which number, what we lost, or?
What we lost versus what we pumped. The information I got, we checked the pump once.
Oh, yeah. Oh, we, we, we fail ourselves by not measuring three years ago, and then two years ago, and then last summer, we began to take measurements. They're a bit rough, but we have some, and I have some emails I can send you, but we always should be measuring it, because there was, there are people that say, we lose nothing. Well, we don't lose nothing. So we, we always should know. We, we need to learn from experience here, not let these years go by.
I want to add to that, though. Mr. Dixon, we don't want you to wait until you're pumping to do that.
I understand.
For three years now, we've been asking, how much goes in on the, on the, from the South Pool, how much comes out-
Well-
-on the North Pool?
To find that out for sure, there's gonna have to be some work done out there in the Equalization Channel to get a defined, measurable dimension to check stream flow on, on both ends.
And what does that mean?
Which, that's why I was saying, we need to some degree to make sure that we talk with the Bureau of Reclamation about what we're trying to do.
And I have to do that, because I can't do anything out there of moving dirt until there's an EA done.
And that's the point I was-
And that's 90 days.
And that's the point I was making about with Mr. Alexander earlier, when I'm saying, we've got these, I mean, there's some level of frustration, because for a long time, three years-
I understand.
-we've been saying, we really need to know how much water comes in, how much water goes out, so we quit this theorizing.
Ah.
Okay? And, and what is the data?
I cannot confirm any previous information.
What is the data? So we'd love it if you got with the Bureau of Reclamation and said, we'd really like to know how much water's coming in, and how much water's going out, and we'd like to quit theorizing what's going on here, and we'd like to know, here's what's going in, and here's what's coming out, and here's what's being lost in the process. And if we had that, then we could make decisions about capital improvement, to stop that, to, you know, pipe it instead of flowing it, or all those kinds of things.
Is the cost worth the benefit?[1538.41]
But we need- we want some data.
Exactly.
And so, if you can get us data when it's just flowing, that'd be great. And so, whatever you have to do with the Bureau of Reclamation, we want that data.
Okay.
And so, then, we move on past that. But now, the motion you're hearing related to your pumping argument, pumping deal, I think you're clearly hearing, regardless of what we pass in this motion, that if you came back in 30 days and said, "Turns out, that was a dumb thing to do. Here's what I recommend to you," you're gonna have an audience of- full of ears.
Okay.
Okay? But today's motion is that you would be ready no later than June the 15th, and earlier if circumstances lead you to believe it's time.
Okay.
That you have authorization to start pumping.
We should have plenty of rain by then, and we don't have to worry about it.
Don't have to worry about it, that's right. And that- and that you would set yourself up initially like you were set up one year ago.
Okay.
Okay? So, that's what your motion and your second is.
That's right.
Okay?
And that's my second.
Okay, that's your motion and your second, and so, is there anything else up here before I go to public input?
Yes, I think you can build a spreadsheet that says, this is a- you can work with the National Weather Service or any hydrologist to say, "Look, if we move the water on this month, this is what the costs are, this is our savings in water from evaporation. If the equalization channel's losing nine acre feet a day, this would also be your savings," or, you know. There's a way to build a spreadsheet that gives us all the information, and we look at it and go, "That's when we should be pumping." I mean, we could, because you look at input versus output and everything, it's- I think it'd take a couple hours to build that spreadsheet, but it's completely worth it to do it, I think. Then we really know.
Okay. You're not- again, there are two of you that spend a lot of time on this, but you guys are not forbidden to talk to Mr. Valenzuela and Mr. Dixon and say, "Here's some things I want you to take into account, or look at and think about," and so, but on the motion, I'm gonna keep- I'm gonna get this through, get it voted on, that we would start no later than June the 15th, unless you come back and say, "No need, give us different advice," but- or earlier. You're authorized to do it even earlier if you think you need to, based on the circumstances that get us there. Okay?
Okay.
Public input on this item before I call for the vote. Call for that vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Okay. So, we'll go from there. Um, where am I? I'm on 15?
12:13.
Okay. Do we have?
Could we get 16?
Yeah. We have executive agenda items, so we're going to go into executive session regardless. Okay? So, maybe we don't gain anything by pushing forward, okay? So, let's stop-
Since he's talking that way and not into the mic, what did you just say?
Okay, what I said, I'm sorry. I said, I asked Mr. Valenzuela, "There are agenda items in executive session, so we're not going to save anything particularly by pushing forward. We may as well stop and come back after executive session." Okay? And so, I'll stop us now, we're about to start number 15, and it is 12:14, and I'll move us into executive session at this time. 51.071, "To consult with an attorney on legal matters pertaining to water acquisition rights and under chapter 550- or section 551.072 to deliberate the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property." It is currently 1:31, and we're going to call the meeting back to order. We're kicking off with item number 15. This is the first public hearing in consideration of introducing an ordinance ordering the general election and special election for May the 11th, 2013. So, is this Ms. Ramirez? Yes.
Yes, sir.
Our city clerk.
This is a routine action, calling the uniform election date for May 11. And we will have a general election and, as well as a special election, to fill an unexpired seat in Single Member District 1.
And do you need action by the council in the form of a motion?
Yes, sir, this is a first hearing, and I'll- in the introduction of the ordinance, so yes, I will need action.
Motion to approve is presented.
Second.
I think Mr. Morrison and Mr. Hersfeld, so anyway, so we have a first public hearing in consideration, and we have a motion and a second to introduce the ordinance ordering the general election and special election for May the 11th, 2013. Is there any other input on this item? Is there any public input on this item? Call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Item number 16. This is the discussion on the vacant Single Member District 4 council member position and related matters, and any action in connection thereto. And having gone through the legalities of what we're dealing with, they are- they are this. We have 30 days from the resignation to appoint someone. We are not ready to appoint anyone today. We have 90 days from the resignation to have a- an election, and under the charter, we're required to hold a special election within 90 days of the resignation. And so, what we're working on right now, and spending energy and effort against, is there an answer where we don't spend the money for a special election in April, and then turn around and have a regular election in May? And we have basically some work to do on that, and that's what we're in the middle of doing, and as we get some things resolved a little further, then we'll be back in a public meeting to explain those things. So, that's where we are. We're not appointing anyone today. We're clear on what the legal responsibilities are. If we appoint anybody, it has to be within 30 days of the day the resignation was made, and if we don't appoint someone, we have to call for a special election, 90 days, within 90 days, and that is before the May election, and we don't see any wiggle room in that. So, we're gonna be moving forward, and we'll bring more information to a public meeting as we- as we get some of those matters dealt with. So, if- is there anything else to be said on item number 16 from council? Okay. So, that's how we move forward on item number 16. I'm gonna move us to follow up on administrative issues. Item number 17 is the consideration of and a possible action on matters discussed in executive or closed session. We did not have anything that required further action today. And item number 18 is the consideration of approving various board nominations by council and designated council members. And so, do you guys want to do these one at a time?
Yes.
Okay. Let's go to item number 18A. This is the airport board. We have a second term through October of 2016 for Fred Key from Single Member District 1. So, Fred from Mr. Alexander, Sonny Sanders from Mr. Morrison, Charlie Powell from Mr. Silvas, is that right? Number three?
Yes.
Okay. And then Elizabeth Grinstaff from Single Member District 6 is being nominated to a first term by Ms. Farmer, to end in October of 2016. So, do I have a motion on this item?
Motion to approve.
Questions? Okay. I have a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a second to approve. Do I have discussion on this item? Mr. Morrison?
I will approve the first three, Fred Key, Sonny Sanders, and Charlie Powell, but I will not vote for Elizabeth Grinstaff.
Okay. And any- do you- I guess-
There's a motion on the floor.
Well, I've got a motion and a second to take them as a slate, so I think I'll end up calling for a vote, and then we'll see how that goes. Okay? Is there any further discussion? Okay. Having brought this up, is there any public input on this item? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Mr. Alexander, I couldn't hear you vote. You're an aye? Okay. They go through four to two. Okay. Item number B, this is the Animal Shelter Advisory Committee, second term through January 2015 for Mary White, Single Member District 5, and Tom Maurer from the mayor.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Questions on this one? Okay. Public input? Call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. The construction board, item C, second terms through February 2015 for Billy Huffman from Single Member District 6, and Pablo Flores from the mayor, and Casey Deering to a first full term of February 2015. Any questions on this one? Call for the vote.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. I got a little ahead of myself. Do you think I'm ready to be done? All right. Okay. Do I have any public input? Call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. The Fort Concho Museum Board, this is second terms through January of 2016 for Mark Priest from Single Member District 1, and Denise Blumkust from Single Member District 5, Mr. Hersfeld. And so, do I have a motion on this one?
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve from Mr. Hersfeld, and a second from Mr. Silvas. Is that okay, Mr. Silvas?
Yes.
Okay. And do I have questions on these? Okay, do I have public input? Call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. And item number E, the planning commission, William Lawrence from Single Member District 5 to a second term through January of 2016. Mr. Hersfeld?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second from Ms. Farmer. All those in- do I have public input on this item? A question on this vote? Call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Opposed? Okay. Next item, the public art commission. These are second terms through April 2014 for Esteban Apadaca from Single Member District 1, and Sue Rainey from Single Member District 6, and Daniel Makins from the mayor, and so, can I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion from Ms. Farmer, a second from- I think I'll give it to Mr. Silvas this time. Anything further on these- on these folks? Okay. Any public input on this item? Okay, call for that vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? On the water advisory board, we have Johnny Oswald from Single Member District 5 to a second term, ending September 2014, and Joe Spahn to a first full term, ending in September 2014, from Single Member District 6. Do I have a motion, Ms. Farmer?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second from Mr. Hersfeld. Well, I mean, she's- she had one of them, so I was trying to help her go ahead and make the motion for her guy, and Mr. Hersfeld made the second, covers his guy, so here we go. Is there any other question on these? Okay, is there a public input on these? Call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Now, then, number 19 is consideration of appointing a city council member to fill the vacancy on the Concho Valley Transit District Board. So, that means that one of us has been serving? Two. Has that been- okay, so it's been- you two have been on the transit?
Johnny, you're on it, right?
Mayor, I believe there are three.
There are three.
So, are you thinking that it is Mr. Adams that we're replacing?
Yes.
Yes, sir. In fact, in his phone call to me, Sean-
Scott.
Scott told me that all three positions' terms were up, and- but I don't- I didn't- Did he follow up with a phone call with you?
He never did.
Okay. For purposes of this, we have Mr. Alexander serving on this- in this capacity. Mr. Silvas, you're serving in this capacity, and Mr. Adams serving in this capacity. Do we want to rotate that around for others to get some experience with the Concho Valley Transit District Board, or just nominate the same folks and move forward, obviously needing to replace Mr. Adams? People have desire to do this, or desire to quit doing it?
I have a desire to step down.
You'd like to be out from under that business?
Mm-hmm.
Okay? Anyone else?
Yeah. I've already done my turn.
On transit board? Okay.
I actually was on it, and I had to step down because of a conflict.
Conflict of interest?
I guess that leaves me.
So, Ms. Farmer, Mr. Alexander will be nominated, and-
Mr. Silvas.
And Mr. Silvas?
He just asked us to-
I'm not sure you get his-
It's okay. Johnny, it takes one of us to show up and make sure what's going on is okay, and it's usually-
Sure. Okay. I don't think you have much choice, young man, so you're being- you're being dragged into service, so, okay? Okay. So, we have Mr. Alexander, Mr. Silvas, and Ms. Farmer being nominated to that. Consideration of appointing, do I need to take a motion on that, or do you need- what do you need besides them saying, "Yes, I will"?
Your vote.
Okay. I nominate.
The nomination's over.
What?
The nomination's over.
Okay, so I'm nominating Mr. Alexander, Mr. Silvas, and Ms. Farmer to serve for the council on the Concho Valley Transit District Board. And I'm looking for a second.
Second.
I have a second from Mr. Alexander. Call for that vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Cute. Okay. This is item number 20, announcements in consideration. How's that go? If nominated, I will not run. If elected, I will not serve. Anyway. Okay. Announcements and consideration of future agenda items. Mr. Wilson, would you like to go through your announcements again, just for the thrill of it? Your capital improvement plan and- Okay, as announcements, let me just briefly reiterate some of these. There are capital improvement plan public forums. There's one on Thursday, February the 7th, at 6:00 PM, at the- here at the McNeese Convention Center. There is also another one on Tuesday, February the 12th, at Lincoln Middle School at 6:00 PM in North San Angelo. And there is a draft of the 2013 to 2018 capital improvement plan available at our website, sanangelotexas.us. Okay. And so, then we have also a Water Customer Service Day. And so, this is an opportunity for water customers who have questions and concerns about their individual account, to have them addressed by a customer service representative. That is on Saturday, February the 9th, at the Water Billing Office at 122 West First Street. Appointments for this are required, and to schedule an appointment, please call 657-4323, 657-4323, before 5 o'clock, before Wednesday, February the 6th. Appointments for Saturday, February the 9th. Then there is also coming up a Ports to Plains Workshop. This is an opportunity for the public and local business community to learn about the ports to plains and its impact on San Angelo. It lasts from 9:00 AM to 1:30 PM on Friday, February the 15th, at ASU's La Grande Alumni Center. You can register online for this one at sanangelotexas.us/civicevents, the Ports to Plains Workshop. Okay. Any other announcements? Okay. Are you wishing you had handled that last one, so it was a little different? Any future agenda items?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Farmer?
Possibly not an agenda item, but I would like to ask Daniel if he would look into- A few years ago, when Lisa Santana was still here with the NPO-
Yes.
I had asked about bus stop covers, you know, in, out of the weather, on two particular locations, being both on Green Meadow, one right there at Green Meadow in Southwest, and the other at Green Meadow and Oak Grove, because it's retirees, people over 65, and was told that they had them, and they would install them. They never got done, so went to the next person, and it still hadn't gotten done, and the last person I talked to was Sean, so I really would like some all-weather covers put in those areas.
I got an idea, because-
Everybody left, so-
Yeah, I know, but I do have something that's interesting. You just got appointed to the transit board.
[laughing]
So, you have a whole new avenue for pursuing your cover.
For pursuing, so, Mr. Benson, if you would check into it, and I-
I will, because he was a goodie to a comic a while ago, that I want to make sure that I want to get him.
Okay.
Okay.
Would appreciate it.
Okay. So, any other future agenda items? Mr. Morrison?
And this also is not a future agenda item, but I had a call last week from a man, and this also was about buses.
Okay.
And he said that Curville Bus would no longer pick up passengers at the transit, that there was no passenger pickup at our bus station for Curville Bus. And he was- he's a veteran, he needs to go back and forth to Albuquerque, and it's a long, drawn-out affair. So, I would just like for you to check into that, sir. And if it's not, then maybe we need to negotiate with him. Thank you.
That's the transit board, that's the board that we're on, Charlotte and Johnny, so-
Call me.
There you go. Okay, I have items. You want to go?
Yes, Mr. Alexander has his hand up next.
Sure, I have two items. The first item is, I was asked if I would write a letter of recommendation to the Rose Bowl Committee, for the Rose Bowl, that we recommend the Bobcat Band be invited to the Rose Bowl ceremonies next year. And they said, you know, if you can get other councilmen on board, that'd be great, and I thought, how do I do that? Michael Dane suggested, pass a resolution recommending them be invited.
Yes.
And so, I would, I wrote a letter to the editor last year, late last year, said, they're absolutely wonderful. I mean, I can't tell you how much work it takes to get to the level they're at, but they are very good, and I think they deserve it from the city council. I don't think we're making a mistake here. I think they very much deserve it.
Okay. But is that an agenda item, or does he, because we wouldn't do it as a proclamation or whatever, so it'd be...
We could do it as a letter of support, a resolution of support.
Let's do a resolution of support. I don't think any of us...
So, so, it would be a resolution of support at a city council meeting, or just pass the...
Let's do it at a city council meeting and get everyone on board with it, and just have everybody sign.